Hey now.
Hi.
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 Okay. Hey Anthony. Oh, maybe you didn't hear me. If everybody can mute themselves that are already in the room, I'm going to be doing some preparatory work to get our meeting started as well, so. But I can see every, almost everybody, so. Looking good. Hey Anthony. Hello.
Hey Craig, I can hear you loud and clear.
Good.
Hi everyone. Tracy. Hey Craig.
Hi guys.
Hi Tracy. Hi Ted.
Andrea, your name is Info.
Yeah, I thought I asked to sign in as a guest, but I'm on my Point Loma Association account. The email is info@pointloma.org, so.
Hey Scott, I like your background.
Yeah, I was all blurry and I wasn't sure because I usually use Zoom, so you'll have to assume that I'm in this beautiful lush spot.
Same place as me.
All over flipped, that's kind of interesting.
And Tracy, the only person I've had contact me about not being able to make it so far is Newman. Everyone else better be here.
Okay Tracy, we seem to be live on Facebook.
I see that, how exciting.
Now I'll try to start recording.
Kevin's here and I'm definitely not driving right now.
Oh, right Kevin, if I may, did you get my, you got my message that somebody by the name of Jeffrey Anson is patiently waiting in the project review committee meeting room instead of the, instead of this room. If anybody knows Jeffrey Anson, could you ask, reach out to him and send him this link? I don't have his contact info.
I tried to join that room and it didn't let me, it just closed the app. So maybe someone sees if that pops up, I don't even know why it's there, if that pops up they can join and message him. Anyone that joins from the board should be given host privileges for whatever.
I can try to do that, but I'm afraid that if I do, I'm not sure if I can do two meetings concurrently. Since I'm posting this one.
In theory you could leave this meeting, it will kick privileges over to me or someone else.
Okay, I'll do that and see if I can help these guys out and I'll be back.
Alright, then I guess we'll go ahead and wait for you to come back before we get this meeting started.
Do we know about any of the other people who don't have pictures up here? Who are joining this meeting here?
Well, one is, one is Chris. One is Teddy. But he'll come on when he's talking. I don't. We're still missing quite a few people.
Craig Sherman, does anybody know who he is? And Kevin, I tried to join that other meeting, but I can't, so. I don't know if anybody's got, there's two people there and I suspect that they're going to be part of the presents, presenting their properties, Jeffrey Anson and John Lorman. So if there's anybody has their information, maybe let them know. I'd hate for them to sit there all day.
But there's a way to kill that, their meeting room, I don't know. I don't know how they got in there. Andrea, we're still missing Jane, Tom, Nicole and Melanie and Melanie just texted me and said she was coming. Oh, and Richard, I don't see Richard anywhere.
Alright. Nicole said she might be running a little bit late, I know she's calling in from the restaurant, so.
Yeah, so we only have like eight people here, which is quorum, but if you want to wait. Nicole is signing in.
Hi everybody.
So now we have nine.
Alright, so we're just missing Richard and the Rupouskis.
And Melanie.
Okay. I prefer to wait just a little bit longer because we do have a consent agenda tonight.
Yeah. Melanie's trying to log in right now. She says she's having technical difficulties. Richard, are you in yet, Richard? And I see Tom and Jane are here.
Just emailing them.
Hi guys.
So I still don't see Richard and Melanie said like she's coming in soon, so.
Okay, well, why don't we?
Richard is here.
Yes, I see.
We're waiting for one more person.
Just Melanie.
I'm gonna text her and make her nervous.
Well, we have quorum and I don't want to get started too much later. Scientists think things are going to go a little bit long tonight and yeah, Melanie's on the transportation subcommittee with us, so. Does anyone have a motion to approve the agenda, with the approval of the agenda, we'll also be approving the consent agenda, so if someone would like to pull either of the items off of that, please make that part of your motion.
Andrea, did you have any further background on that? The car, car and bicycle parking issue?
Yeah, so it's, yeah, like we discussed, it would just be allowing minimum, so anyone who has a minimum parking requirement, be it a business, you know, restaurant, they would be allowed to replace their vehicle parking spots with two bicycle parking spots. So it would just apply to those parking spots and not other larger public parking lots.
I'd like to pull that from the consent and put it at the end of tonight's agenda if we could.
Okay. Okay, and can you finish that with a motion to otherwise approve the agenda?
And I'll move to approve the agenda as modified.
Do I have a second?
I'll stop him that.
Great, okay, that, oh. That is going to be, sorry, an action item, the second action item listed, that's number two, will be the CIP is obviously action item number three and I will make the bike parking action item number four. A lot of typos on the agenda this month, I'm sorry guys. Hope it isn't too confusing. Alright, do we have any, oh, sorry, does anyone object to the approval of the agenda with the additional action item? Okay, great. Do I have any changes to the minutes? From last month's meeting?
I had one change. Kevin told me that the address that John had mentioned was incorrect. So he just told me what the correct address was and I made that change. So, but I hadn't received any other updates from anyone else.
Right. Do we have a motion to approve the minutes then?
I motion to approve them.
Great, I'll do Chris first, Jane second. Do we have any objections over approving the minutes? Okay, wonderful. Okay, let's move into community reports, so I'm going to hop over to Teddy first because I see him, so Teddy.
Hello.
Thank you.
Good to see you all, I hope everyone's doing well. Not too much to report this time around, we are on legislative recess right now, so no council committees or policy committees are meeting this week. It'll ramp up again next week with some items on the agenda. But since we last met, the budget was approved. That puts forward a lot of funding for different priorities that Council President Campbell has, including addressing homelessness, supporting small businesses, protecting the environment, maintaining core services and supporting city operations. I'll drop a link to a bit of a highlights page that we put together. Also link you to the place where you can see the budget detail itself. And also encourage you to check the website out for the Independent Budget Analyst. IBA has a bunch of resources on their website to guide you through the budget process, kind of have a good PowerPoint presentation on there. So I encourage you to check that out. If you have any questions about the budget process or things that may have gone through that you need more info on, please let me know, I'll link some of that in the chat. Other than that, I do want to note that I met today with some Parks and Rec staff at the Eber Street Park. That went really well, I think. Nicole Wino was there and just want to give her a shout out for her ongoing efforts around park improvements. She and Andrea did meet with Council President Campbell on those items and I think it's fair to say she loved them all, I think it was mostly just logistics and and funding, which is always the key to these things, so. Just want to say thank you to the board, especially the subcommittee for putting all that together, putting all that imagination forward. Like I said, we want to be supportive of all of those priorities, but I think we want to be realistic about what we can get done sooner than later. Some of those are longer projects that'll take more time. And as we heard today from department staff, it's, it's a slow and long haul process, so in a way it was kind of a a tough meeting, but I think it was good to really hear from staff what the next steps for us are to get some of these things done in, in short order. So I just want to say thank you for that. That kind of dovetails into a conversation around CIP priorities, so I'm excited to hear the input from this board on that. I know Andrea had kind of sent over some info on that. I just want to take a quick note that our office is going to continue to have the OB Pier, the lifeguard station, the OB library as our top priorities and also coastal access points that we've continued to put in our budget memos. That includes the Bermuda stairs, the orchard stair and a cruise stairs. And then kind of dealing with some of the sea level issues, so. Those will remain top priorities, but welcome all the feedback that I'll hear tonight and from, from the board on what they'd like to see and we'll be happy to relay that. That's all I have, if there's questions, happy to answer them.
Great, thanks Teddy. And yeah, we really appreciate the quick turnaround on getting city staff out to Ebers as well. So hopefully we can make those key improvements. Does anyone have any questions for Teddy and council member of Council President Campbell's office? Okay, we will move, oh, Craig.
I guess, when would be the appropriate time to share the information about what's going on over there at Luigi's Pizza?
Yeah. I think now would be a properly appropriate time if you're trying to loop council office into it.
Okay. Teddy, we seem to have a problem with people, including businesses, just kind of doing whatever they damn please and not abiding by the rules and the latest is that Luigi's Pizza, which took over the Bahia Bravo site at the corner of Newport and Bacon on the west side of the street. They just decided that they were going to eliminate their parking lot. And in the process, they removed, I believe, eight parking spaces, including a disabled parking space, erected a six foot tall concrete block enclosure, moved their dumpsters to the front of the lot surrounded by this concrete enclosure, opening onto the sidewalk now and obstructed the curb cut so that there's absolutely no vehicle access into the parking lot. I know a complaint has been made to code compliance, Anthony, have you heard anything back with respect to whether that's been assigned yet? That seems like a no. So we'd like to make the council office aware, aware of this, I mean, we think that it's important that everyone play by the rules. Otherwise, you know, we're kind of not a community of laws, we're just the Wild West.
I appreciate that Craig, I hadn't been made aware of that, but we'll definitely see if we can get some message out to them to contact them. Have, do you know if OBMA is also aware?
OBMA is aware, but OBMA sort of has a policy of not getting involved when businesses break the law. They take the position that they are not the sheriff and to get involved when a business decides to ignore, you know, the municipal code and break the law, they're not going to be the one to get involved.
Okay, well, I appreciate you notifying me. I can definitely work with Coda to see what, where the status is of that code enforcement report, whoever's, whoever's in charge of that, we'll figure out where that is. And then we can definitely work with the business to maybe relay some information. I know that they're obviously kind of new, but happy to kind of look into that and see if we can make contact with them. If you don't mind, I'll send you an email to kind of.
That's fine. And, and the reason, the reason, the reason I'm bringing it up is it's created a traffic safety issue because the waste management trucks that emptied the dumpsters for the restaurant used to pull into the parking lot, the dumpsters were located against a wall at the back of the lot. And now since vehicles are parked in the curb cut because it's no longer provides access, it's causing problems when the waste management trucks come to empty the dumpsters because they don't have proper access.
Okay.
And the dumpsters are now being wheeled across the sidewalk.
Wow. Alright, well, I'll follow up with you during work hours to make sure I have everything down correctly. And, and I'll see what kind of input we can get. I know Coda's on the line too, so it'll, it'll probably be him CC'd on an email as well. But we're happy to see where the status is of a complaint, how that's being reviewed. And then maybe it's just an issue of communicating with that business, but I'm happy to kind of relay those concerns.
Well, you know, they've, they've, and I checked Delp and DSD and there's no permit on it, so. They've invested a substantial amount of money, you know, doing these permanent improvements and so
Okay.
Just FYI on that.
Interesting. Alright, thank you Craig.
Okay.
Thank you. Do we have any other questions before I hop over to Coda in the mayor's office? And I think that is the last rep I see here. I'm going to turn the floor over to Coda then, thank you. Good to see you Coda.
Yeah, good to see you guys. Again, my name is Coda Zeizer, I'm the District Two Community Rep for Mayor Gloria. We're kind of in the same boat as Teddy and Council District Two, it's been pretty slow with everything being on legislative recess. About two weeks ago, our fiscal year 2022 budget was unanimously approved. The state is also in their budget season as well, so you guys should be seeing some exciting news about various funding aspects coming down from the state and our level. A few quick highlights for OB. So late last month, we released a $145 million infrastructure plan, so these improvements are going to go to transportation, stormwater, parks and rec and city facilities. Specific to OB, we have $2.1 million going to improve public access to the coast at Bermuda Ave and then $940,000 going to the OB library. So just two quick highlights coming down to this upcoming fiscal year. We are now in fiscal year 2022, it started on July 1st, so these funds, I'm not too sure on the timeline of when they're coming down, I can get you guys that information, but those are the funding allocations within our budget. Again, that's 2.1 million for Bermuda Ave and then 940,000 for the OB library. And that's it for me, and so I'm more than happy to take any questions.
Thank you. Does anyone have any questions for Mayor Gloria's office?
Coda, I have a question on the pier, sorry.
Yes.
Starting video. Any updates on pier information, funding?
Yeah, so right now we're still working with our state partners. We did put in a request within the, through Assemblymember Ward and Senator Tony Atkins' office for funding allocations. We believe we got it, but the governor has yet to sign the bill, so it's included in the bill and the budget bill, but they have yet to sign it, so that could be a substantial amount of money, hopefully a couple million dollars allocated to the pier. We're just, literally the governor could sign this bill any day now. So we're just waiting for confirmation from our state delegation about when it gets signed.
Thank you.
Great, good to hear. Any other questions for Mayor's office? Before we move along. Okay, I know Cole said he wasn't going to be here today and then Rachel isn't here. So we will go ahead and move to non-agenda public comments. Do I have, if you could either physically raise your hand or utilize the raise hand button, we can go through non-agenda public comment, I will give everyone each two minutes if they're seeking to make one. And this is just for non-agenda public comment, if you are going to be commenting on one of the agenda items, we will have plenty of time for public comment for each of those as well. Okay, yeah, OB library, Celine.
Okay, there we go. Hello, everybody. First, I want to say it was a pleasure meeting several of you at the OB Vibe. It was a wonderful event and I was happy to have been there and participated and thank you to Laura Gennison and the OB library friends for having a booth there. It was great to meet the community and about books and learn more about what's going on in OB and we gave out a lot of swag and it was a great gathering, so I'm really thankful for that. I also want to thank Teddy and Coda for mentioning the library and that it is a high priority, I'm happy to hear that, I'm happy to hear that the funding is there for the library. And we are working on doing the the expansion. I'm sure many of you are still wondering, we're hoping to within the next three years, hopefully within a year, but realistically maybe within the next three years and with the funding coming in, that should help move it along. So we will keep you all posted as that progresses. And as far as OB library opening, the, the city did just bump up some more branches, opening to more capacity. We're working on hiring more staff, so at this time we're not able to open the OB library yet, but we are hoping for a fall opening date, possibly September. But don't quote me on that because it's not, you know, determined for sure yet, that's just our hope and our wish and our dream is once we get the funding and the, or I should say the staffing in place. And, and I'll speak for Laura here, we're hoping also to have a Friends book sale in the fall, we would probably hold it outdoors and we think that's a really good time of year to do it and you want to, coming into the holiday season and we'll make sure all the safety protocols are in place for that. So that's about all I really have to share. If anybody has any questions, I'd be happy to try to answer them and thank you for giving me a few minutes to share with you all.
I have a question.
Go for it, George.
I've been doing this for a few years and we've heard of money going to the OB library, in this case it sounds like almost a million dollars. Where does that money go to? Is that paying your salaries? Is that buying books? Is that buying the infrastructure? Could you please fill me in on that a little?
To the best of my knowledge, it's for the infrastructure and the expansion. I believe salaries are covered by the city budget. But I would have to check into that to be sure, I don't want to misspeak. But I don't think, I think it's the infrastructure and the expansion that that funding is for.
Is this like a jobs creation fund? Or I mean, what is it? Is it going to contractors? Is it going to the engineers designing it?
It's going to the cost of doing the expansion. But I can get back to you with more definitive answers as far as I suppose.
A legitimate question, I would be, I would enjoy hearing more about that, thank you.
Yeah, Richard, I can follow up with you as well. The notes I have is just 940,000. It won't go to salaries, that's incorporated in the budget, this is an additional allocation. So I'll be able to get you more information on specifically what it's going to be going towards.
Thank you.
Thanks Celine, do we, do we have anyone else wishing to make a non-agenda public comment? Okay, I do not see any virtual hands raised or any of your picture hands raised, so we're going to move now in this agenda item. The San Diego City Council Redistricting Commission has asked to give a brief presentation to us about the process they're currently going through. So Laura Fleming, I will turn the floor over to you. Hi Laura.
Hi, good evening. Thank you so much for putting us on your agenda. Before I start, I just wanted
Before I start, I just wanted to introduce Council District Two Redistricting Representative Fred Cosma. I think he might be in the audience right now. And also I used to live in Ocean Beach forever and actually was the community representative many years ago. So I remember Craig and Jane. And hypothetically, Jane was actually one of my professors. So it's nice to see a couple of you again. If you don't mind, I'm just going to do a quick screen share so I can bring up the presentation. Okay, thanks. Okay. Hopefully everyone can see that. See, I can't see you. So hopefully you can see me.
You're good to go.
Okay, perfect. Thanks. And let's start the slideshow. Okay, there we go. So I just want to start just by giving a quick heads up that although this evening isn't necessarily the venue for, for providing a great deal of feedback. We'd really encourage you to go on our website to complete either a public comment form or to just get more information on how you can actually participate in real time in our commission hearings. And I'll provide that more information towards the end of the presentation. So first, what does redistricting mean for our specific city? Well, it means that the commission uses the census data to evaluate the nine city council districts and to redraw the boundary lines to make sure that each district contains roughly one ninth of the population of our whole city. So why do we do this every 10 years? Well, for starters, we're actually mandated by state and federal laws to do so. The commission also redraws the boundary lines because our communities are changing. You might've started out living in Council District Seven, and then you get a job in District Two, and so you move to be closer to work. The Redistricting Commission has to account for all of these changes. So that each of the nine city council districts have roughly the same percentage of residents. And this is really crucial for fair and equitable representation for all of us who live in San Diego. So who serves on the commission? Well, obviously, in addition to Commissioner Cosma, who will be joining us shortly, there are eight other commissioners and they were selected by a panel of three retired judges. And so there's one representative for each of the nine city council districts. And on our website, you can.
Laura, I just want to say that I'm, I'm here. I made it. So.
Hello, Fred.
Hi, Andrea.
Fred's great. And he's actually also the Chair of the Peninsula Community Planning Board. So probably, some of you probably already know him. So before Fred so rudely interrupted me, you can learn a lot more about Fred and all of the other commissioners and kind of get more information about their qualifications and their community involvement on our website. So the commission has a fair amount of responsibilities, which include doing what we're doing here this evening. We really want the redistricting process to be inclusive, which means that we first need to reach out to the community and kind of help residents better understand the process and let them know how they can actually participate. Now, once we receive the census data, the commission will also be responsible for drafting and finalizing the maps for all nine city council districts. And this must be done with a lot of transparency and by engaging the public who can actually provide their own maps for consideration. So before they even think about drafting the maps, the commission needs to know what the parameters are. So as we discussed, the maps have to provide equitable representation. That happens by making sure that each council district basically contains roughly one ninth of the city's population. They're also charged with preserving communities of interest and making sure that the districts are geographically compact and composed of contiguous territory. And the Redistricting Commission is completely independent. We're a nonpartisan entity. So we're not in communication with the mayor or with any of the council members or even their staff. So we don't hear from them about where they want to see these boundaries drawn. So let's talk a little bit about timing. And this is going to be tricky because we're actually not completely certain of when we're actually going to receive the census data. As you probably know, the, the full release of the census data has been delayed by several months. So our best guess at this point is we'll receive the data by either the end of August or September. The California Supreme Court actually ruled last summer that the California Redistricting Commission would have some additional time to draw and finalize their maps. So there's potential that local jurisdictions like ours with redistricting commissions might receive that same extension. But at this point, we're, we're not betting on it and we're planning on having the data and the maps drawn by December 15th of this year. So this slide provides kind of a timeline, which is based on the premise that the commission will receive that census data by the end of September. So as you can see, even before the commission receives the data, there's a great deal that takes place. In addition to our regular monthly meetings, there are several subcommittees that meet regularly and they're tasked with everything from community outreach to hiring outside legal counsel and mapping demographers. We want to spend a little time talking about deviations. So obviously the goal is to have no deviations, meaning that each council district has the same percentage of residents. But realistically, there's, there's just going to be some deviation. The total deviation should be no more than 10%, though again, obviously zero is our goal. After the 2010 City of San Diego Redistricting Commission redrew their lines, they had a total citywide deviation of 4.59%. So on this slide, we provide the deviations for all nine city council districts. And I think as you can see, the, the highest deviation for an individual council district was negative 2.69. So all quite low. So as we discussed, we obviously don't currently have the census data, which we'll use to evaluate the population differences in the nine council districts. However, we do have SandDAG's 2019 population estimates, basically just to give us a general idea about the population trends in the various council districts. So using those SandDAG estimates, you can see that District Three has experienced a, a great deal of growth and has a deviation all by itself of, of over 24%. On the other side of the spectrum is District Four, which has lost a portion of their, their population with a deviation of negative 16.4%. We're just basically providing this information to give residents kind of a, a potential preview of what the census data might tell us. It, it, it's really important to look at kind of like the big picture with this data and, and basically see how enlarging or reducing the size of, of one council district could really impact another. The, the best way to think about it is it's just one really big puzzle and the commission's responsibility is to make it fit with as few deviations as possible. As we discussed at the beginning of the presentation, we, we really want this to be an inclusive process. And we're providing residents with different ways to be involved. So you can participate in our hearings, which are conducted on the third Thursday of the month on Zoom. So the Thursday after next, we'll have a meeting. Residents can also fill out a web form to provide us with your feedback on either an agenda item or just non-agenda public comment. Or if members of the public would prefer, they can actually literally mail us written materials. We, we really don't care how people participate. We just want everyone to, to get involved and we want to hear from them. And there are several ways to connect with the Redistricting Commission on social media or by emailing redistricting2020@sandiego.gov. I manage, manage that email account and I check it several times a day. And do we just want to thank you again for allowing us to provide some information about the redistricting process and how you can get involved. With that, I will stop screen sharing and I will turn it back over for any questions or comments.
Thanks so much. So just if anyone, if you want to make a question or if you have a com- comment, please raise your hand, yeah, either in your little picture or utilize the raise hand button. Fred, I'll let you go first.
Yeah, yeah. Thanks, Andrea. As, as a commissioner, I just like to make a comment. I mean, it, it's obviously a very important process to us and I'm not going to prejudge anything, but I do think that the communities of interest like Ocean Beach, Point Loma and Midway, you know, are, are communities that should be together. But as you can tell from the map, right? District Two is too big, District One's too big, District Three is too big. So there's going to be some pressure to move the lines around. And so that's why it's important for us to have public in, input from people that live in the various communities as to where they think the line should be and what communities they want to keep together. And, you know, for example, an issue like, you know, beach communities share a lot of the same issues regarding short-term vacation rentals. So, so I mean, I think that that's, you know, those are kind of issues that sort of draw some communities together. But think about issues like that. And if you have ideas and you want to participate, I would encourage everybody to do that.
Thank you. Does anyone have any questions? I don't see anyone using the raise hand function. I don't see anyone physically raising their hand either. So I'm going to wrap this up, but we will make sure to post those links on our Facebook page. So you can come back to them and get involved. And hopefully maybe we'll see at least Fred again, once the census data comes out and we can talk about it more later in the year. Thank you too. Thank you.
Thanks, Laura.
Okay. Getting on to the action items on our agenda. First up, we have the Inn at Sunset Cliffs. So do I have the applicant present?
Andrea, can I enter for real quick? Does the applicant for Oceanfront, do they know about the consent agenda that their, is their project is approved?
Apologies. Yes. So for the oceanfront people, I will go ahead and I will send in your form at 6:20 tomorrow. First thing in the morning. So that will be checked off your list. Okay, let's move on to the Inn at Sunset Cliffs now.
Hi. Good afternoon. My name is Chris Morrow.
Hi.
I'm part of the team representing the Inn at Sunset Cliffs and hopefully we'll be able to share a screen, Chandra. Or can you pull up our PowerPoint?
Oh, I, yeah, you can. There is a screen share button at the bottom as well, but I can go ahead and do it if you feel more comfortable that way.
Thank you. Great. That's perfect. So as I said, we've got a whole team. I'll get into introductions in just a little bit, but myself, I'm Chris Morrow. I'm a planner. I've been working on the Inn at Sunset Cliffs since at least 2010. So that's 11 years of processing permits and going through various natural disasters, et cetera. So this first slide simply indicates our location and the fact that we're in a residential multiple unit zone. We are seeking your positive recommendation of approval to the City of San Diego and the Hearing Officer for the Process Three Site Development Permit. Subsequent to that, we will need to go to the California Coastal Commission for the coastal development permit. We are not requesting a conditional use permit or variance at this time. Next slide, please. So just, I'll, I'll introduce everybody. Dr. Stan Joe is the owner. He is a COVID doctor working out of Phoenix. Gavin Fleming, a lot of you, if not all of you know him, he's the hotel manager. And the team that's helping them out in terms of getting their permits are, are Lee and Chandra. They represent the legal side of things. And then Walt Crampton, he's the principal engineer. And then as I said, I'm, I'm the planner. Next slide, please. Gavin?
He may be muted.
These meetings are always so seamless. I did see Gavin on there, right?
Yeah, I saw him on there. I don't know what happened.
Well, let me just in, in the effort to keep moving things forward. And if Gavin hops on, that would be great. So this slide basically talks a little bit about the Inn at Sunset Cliffs and its history. It's been there since 1953, TripAdvisor Hall of Fame winner. Just one of San Diego's only oceanfront hotels. What we want to do is to be able to continue providing affordable oceanfront accommodations. Same ownership's been there for 20 years. Next slide, please.
Let me reiterate on that Planet X Hotel. Sorry for that, you guys. I assume, some of us have children around, but what we're going to go ahead and bring that Planet X Hotel back is that brings we're talking celebrities, we're talking C-list, A-list, B-list, everybody going down and coming to our community for that operations. Now, that hits 110 million people every, every month. And it really brings a lot of attention to our support, such as Hodads and the Holding Company and OB Noodle House and OB Wonderland and the Blue Fish. Hopefully there's a lot of, of community support that we can continue on with this project. It will only increase our amount of support within the community. We do operate as one of the most environmentally friendly hotels as well. So that is what has taken us so long. We have thought of this and we want to have this project going forward. You'll see the massive amount of reviews. It's because we've been trying to work with everybody to try to make this happen the correct way. So we've come up with this project. We're super excited about our location. Again, Point Loma Avenue, right there on Sunset Cliff Boulevard. I don't know how many people drive by per day, but it's pretty high up there. So if we can just continue our operations, we'd certainly appreciate it.
Thanks, Gavin. Next slide, please. And Walt Crampton will take over.
Thank you very much. And I actually have Chris Morrow beat since I've been working out here since 1978. Initially with the city of San Diego, doing the Sunset Close Shoreline Stabilization work. This photograph taken in 82 shows the, the inn and the, the lower sea wall in the foreground on the right-hand side. Next slide. This photograph taken at the same time shows a close-up of the, the sea wall. And you can see kind of in the middle of the sea wall, you have a masonry block wall in the upper part and a cast-in-place concrete wall in the lower part. On the left-hand margin, you see the geologic formation and it's variable shelf rock. It's 80 million-year-old, the Pinoma Formation. Next slide. This is an interesting photo taken in January 2018. And this shows the bottom of the masonry block wall and ways we're plucking out some of the masonry blocks so that there's this overhang like in the right-hand margin. You can see this very long overhang. And it was just a matter of time before there was a collapse. Next slide. And this photograph also taken, so the right-hand side is, is the yielding of the wall in January 18. The left-hand photograph again in January 2018. We did some remedial work in the middle photograph. After some stabilization was in February 21, 19, I mean, 2021, after a large storm where some of the, this, some of the repairs were knocked down and damaged. Next slide.
Thanks, Walt. Just a, just a little bit of a brief history. This is actually the third time we've been before the full planning board. We just finished our third time before the Project Review Committee last month where we were able to receive a four to zero vote to recommend approval to the full board. As I noted, both the hotel and the sea wall were built in the middle of the last century. And when, when I came, excuse me, when I came involved, it was because the city had issued a notice of violation for three things. It was for the concrete patio, the lower deck, the use of the facility for weddings and garages being used for storage. So we quickly, in reverse order, we took care of the garages by cleaning them out and restoring the parking use that's there. The wedding use was taken care of through a citywide classification of use, which essentially said weddings, sorry, are pretty common use and associated with motels and hotels. So that was cleared up citywide. And then the notice of violation for the concrete patio. That's what led us to submitting our first application for discretionary permit in April of 2011. 2013, that was the first of our multiple visits to both the PRC and the full board. Again, all of them resulted in formal recommendations of approval. Then back at that time, in 2015, we were almost getting ready to go to hearing and then mother and father nature intervened. King Tides Highways destroyed the deck. Emergency permits were requested and approved. It was reconstructed, destroyed again in 2019. And we've been moving forward since then with the continued discretionary permit coordination and processing with both the city and the California Coastal Commission. Next slide, please. So what we have before you today is really, we want the recommendation of approval of the proposed project to both the Hearing Officer and City Staff. What we've done now to resolve the last outstanding item from the notice of violation is to eliminate the lower deck, locate a new sea camp pile, sea wall, about 23 landward of where it exists today. So that will resolve the last outstanding issue of the notice of violation. And the purpose of moving this landward is, as demonstrated by 2015 and 2019, it's really, it, it just with rising sea levels, et cetera, the, the lower deck was more problematic. And, and we felt the way to protect the long term. And we felt the way to protect the long-term health, safety and welfare of the Inn and its guests was to move the wall landward. And that would allow us to preserve and protect the community asset that is the Inn and continue to provide the low-cost visitor-serving accommodations that are important to both the California Coastal Commission, the local coastal plan and the community plan. And as noted, we're consistent with the underlying zone, the Ocean Beach LCP and the surrounding development. Our proposed use is entirely appropriate and consistent with the neighborhood character, as you all know. The vast majority of properties, if not all of them, up and down to the north and south of us all have sea walls to preserve and protect the property. We also, with our new sea wall design, it will be completely consistent with the, with the sea wall along the Bermuda Avenue beach, which the community plan calls out as an excellent example of an appropriately designed shoreline protective work. So that being said, let's move to the next slide. So just a couple more details about the proposal. It's fairly straightforward and simple. All the, as Gavin noted, all the existing landscaping is well-maintained, consistent with the neighborhood. Any new landscaping will be native and drought tolerant. All onsite stormwater is directed to the adjacent stormwater conveying system, more colloquially known as the curb and gutter. Parking requirements are taken care of. There's no proposed exposed mechanical equipment or signage. And there's nothing, there is no modification to the main structure. We're just simply seeking approval of a new sea wall. Next slide, please. And I will turn it back over to Walt.
Thank you again. I am also a licensed, currently licensed technical engineer and have been working on this project and adjacent projects in Ocean Beach again, since the late 70s. And because of the geology of this area, the upper portion, the other half of the bluff really is a fairly erodible material. And if you removed the sea wall, it would immediately threaten to destabilize the Inn. So this, this wall, it was started construction in 1962, I'm sorry, 1952. So if it were to be removed, it would immediately threaten the Inn above it. So next slide. So this shows the original, this is the existing site plan. It shows some of the remedial work that was done. So as Chris indicated in 2015, there was a failure that necessitated some stabilization. And then we also placed rock at the toe of the slope. All of this will be removed with a new project. Next slide. So this shows the now, the new proposed project. It's a overlapping drilled pier wall at the back of the existing patio. Importantly, this, the alignment of this wall, we've worked with coastal mission staff and they've agreed to this alignment in exchange for pushing it back to the back of the, of the existing patio. Next slide. So this shows a plan view, I mean, I'm sorry, a profile view of the wall. And again, on the left side, because of the high shelf rock, the wall would appear fairly shallow. As you go to the southern end of the wall, where the bedrock is considerably deeper, it will be, it would be more exposed. Next slide. Now this shows three before and after cross-sections cut through the property. So the upper three cross-sections show the existing conditions today. And then with the removal of the wall on the, on the removal of the lower deck and the construction of a wall, land, on the landward side of the lower deck, you develop considerable low relief habitat and remove this deck that's been a concern for quite a while and completely stabilize the back beach, creating a higher wall that has less overtopping. Next slide. This is an example of the location of the wall. And importantly, we've pointed out that it's important to maintain this upper slope, this upper, this upper concreted surface, so that water cannot saturate the backfill. So the blue shading indicates what would happen in the absence of an impermeable surface that needs to protect the wall and prevent hydrostatic pressures from overloading the wall. Next slide. And section B is a location of where that wall is shown, just to provide perspective. Next slide. And again, this is the, really the sea wall that's solely Bermuda Avenue. And we will mimic this wall. And we find this to be an attractive example of what the Inn at Sunset Cliffs, what their wall would look like as well. Next slide.
Thanks Walt. One of the, one of the community plan requirements is the retention and preservation of public coastal views. So we've taken a picture from the terminus of Point Loma Avenue, which is shown in picture 4.4. And you can clearly see that, you know, there's obviously a public view corridor that will remain. Next slide. So this, a couple more shots, this frames it from a little bit farther away, if you will. Typical of all the east-west trending streets within the community of Ocean Beach, there's, it's essentially built out. So each one of the streets has structures on it that are somewhere close to 30 feet typically. So they frame the view corridor. As you get closer to the sea, the view corridor continues to open up. But if you're on top of the hill, you can see right down Point Loma Avenue all the way out to the horizon. Next slide. This is a photo simulation that we prepared. On the left side, it's existing today. On the right side, it shows what will happen with the construction of the new wall and the removal of the lower terrace. So we're able to open up even more of the view corridor. It will, obviously, you'll only see it when you're right down there at the terminus of Point Loma Avenue. But it will definitely be a positive step. Next one. Lee?
Yeah, so the PRC asked us to address the possibility of adding a public access component to the project, which would consist of basically an easement from the street across the southern boundary of the property to the existing stairs and, and down to the coastline. And so, you know, anyone who's involved in land use is well familiar with the Nolan Dolan framework. And this arises out of the Fifth Amendment of the US Constitution, which says that the government cannot take for public use that which is private property without providing compensation to the property owner. And in the context of permitting, the Nolan Dolan framework says that a permit condition cannot require dedication of property to the public, such as a public access easement that's being discussed here. Unless there is a nexus and proportionality between the property that the government demands and the social costs of the applicant's proposal. This project really has no adverse impact on public access. And therefore, there is no nexus between the project and any public access issues. The wall is being developed entirely on private property. There's no encroachment on any existing public access point. And in fact, the wall is being pulled further inward, landward into the private property, as opposed to extending out onto public property. So there really is no public access impact of the project. And therefore, it would not give rise to any need to mitigate any impact by by dedicating a public access easement across the property. And the Ocean Beach Community Plan recognizes the limitations under Nolan Dolan. And it says new development should provide new public access when a project creates an impact to any public access or recreation area. And in other words, the provision of new public access is considered only when the project itself has an impact on public access, a public access recreation area, which this project does not. And therefore, any requirement to provide additional public access does not apply. Next slide, please. It's also important to recognize that adequate public access already exists. So the Ocean Beach Community Plan says in areas where physical access to the shoreline does not exist within 500 feet of a private development project proposed on the shoreline, a new access way across private property should be considered. We actually have two existing public access points within 500 feet of the Inn at Sunset Cliffs property. The first one is at the end of Point Loma Avenue, that public access, even though it exists and it's legal public access, it's currently closed due to physical damage to the stairs, which occurred from no fault of, of the Inn at Sunset Cliffs. It was just something that happened naturally. The city could certainly rehabilitate that public access. And, you know, that, that would make a lot more sense than having the public walk across the Inn at Sunset Cliffs private property. And then there's another public access point from Uta Avenue that, you know, according to my rough measurements, is about 385 feet from the Inn at Sunset Cliffs property. And as we heard at the beginning of this meeting, the, the city is in the process of funding and improving that public access point. And so that, that's within the 500-foot threshold and is considered adequate public access under the Ocean Beach Community Plan. Next slide, please. So given the existing public access to the beach, there would be very minimal gain by creating a new public access easement across the Inn at Sunset Cliffs private property. And against that minimal benefit, I think it's important to consider what the burden would be on the Inn. And we have some photos here to illustrate that. On the right, you see the view from the sidewalk. There's a narrow passageway, which is currently protected with a gate. So the public would have to walk through the Inn's landscaping, through that area where the gate is, and then down a narrow passageway, which is shown on the upper left. And as you can see, there's doors and windows to the Inn all along there. And we believe and, and we think it's pretty common sense that that would give rise to security issues to having any member of the public be allowed to walk through there in close proximity to those rooms. There's really no way to separate the walkway from those windows. So it would be a, a security issue that would be very difficult to protect against. Then on the bottom left, you see the view toward the ocean from the end of that passageway, looking down the existing stairs. Next slide, please. So discussing the, the project overall.
Ben here, one second. I just want, we have about 20 more minutes left for this project. And I do want to provide ample time for community input as well. How many more slides do you guys have?
I'm not sure how many more. It's.
We can be quick.
About five more, but, but we'll be quick. We've just highlighted here the the elements of the community plan that this is consistent with. In several places in the community plan, it identifies the importance of protecting existing development and especially hotel and motel facilities. Next slide. The project is consistent with the Coastal Act, which gives property owners the right to construct sea walls and other such shoreline protective devices when the existing structures are in danger. And the Coastal Act also gives a property owner the right to replace a structure that's been destroyed. Next slide, please. This is the section of the San Diego Municipal Code directly addressing this. And again, similar to the Coastal Act, gives the property owner a right to protect existing structures on the property. Next slide. We submitted a biology report to the city. It found no biological impacts to the project. The city has found that acceptable. I don't think if anyone has suggested that there's any biological impacts. The project would be built well above the water line, well away from the beach and, and existing tide pools and would in fact open up an area of the bluff and tidal areas. Next slide.
Thanks, Lee.
Chris.
We've got just two more slides. So we have all outstanding review cycle comments. We've submitted them to you. There's a couple that are still open, but it's really more of an administrative act than anything of substance. Planning, geology have closed their comments. They were really important. Environmental has closed their comments. That was the substantive change from the PRC to the full board. So environmental and working with the city attorney's office will be working on the initial study and a negative declaration that they hope to complete in August. And then we'll be able to be scheduled for our public hearing in front of the hearing officer. So next slide, in summary, I really want to thank everybody for your attention and time. You've been along with us for this full 10-plus years. We would love to have a recommendation of approval to both, as I've said, the hearing officer and city staff. And now we'd love to open it up to any questions or comments. And thank you very much.
Thank you. I'm going to stop sharing my screen now, get back to it. So I do have, I did have a couple of members of the public request to speak on this item. So I am going to give them some time first. What I don't want to happen here is anyone to kind of jump out of turn. If you have not been recognized by the chair to speak, please do not unmute yourself and start speaking. That will not go over well for you. So what we're going to do, so first I'm going to have the Holtons. I know that you prepared a position, then I have another member of the public who asked to speak. And then I want to go into board comment possibly after that. Thank you.
I would like to prevent Olivia Boden to be able to speak first, and then I'll speak after her. That's convenient.
That's fine with me. Thank you.
We don't want to run out of time. So I'll let Olivia go first.
Okay, Livy, if you do want to, I know you had a presentation.
Yeah, so let me let me share. All right. Can you guys see this? Because I can't see you.
No.
Is that working?
It's working now.
Oops.
Oops.
All right. Thank you, everybody. I'm Olivia Borak Boden. I am an attorney at Coast Law Group and I am Legal Director of Coastal Environmental Rights Foundation. We've also been involved in this project for over a decade and have a history of opposition and litigation and try to go as quickly as possible through some of the history. So as you heard, there have been multiple deck failures in the past. In 1991, there was a deck failure and some unlawful fill. In 2015, there was an emergency permit issued. And the, the latest failure was in 2019. The current sea wall and lower deck are actually partially below the mean-high tide line, which is why it's so dangerous to keep those structures where they are right now and why there's been so many failures in the past. And the, the reason that we're here today is actually not because the Inn is taking its time and getting input, but because the Inn And getting input, but because the inn tried to get the prior seawall and the prior deck approved, but. Because of the. Infeasibility of that project, because it is actually in an unsafe area, the. After the fact permit could not be issued. The city. Said that they would not approve the project, so they issued this notice of right to appeal for a sequo exemption based on project denial. And likewise, the Coastal Commission did not find that the project was supportable as. As proposed and issued a notice of violation to the inn for the unpermitted. Terrace and then also for some of the extra work that was done in connection with the. 2019 CDP. Emergency CDP. So now the applicant has proposed a seawall that is moving landward and admittedly. That is an improvement. This is a step in the right direction, but what you see here is. In the yellow area, that's the fill that would be placed on the sensitive coastal left face. And that's being proposed as necessary for coastal protection and erosion control. But really, it's an effort to continue to utilize public resources for private gain to continue. Using the public land for the inn's commercial enterprise and this actually incentivizes continued. Failures and continued emergency work because the the inn, the principal structure is not the asset that's intended to be protected. Because there's now this this deck that's built where it's not supposed to be, the inn can continue to run in and get. Emergency permits and emergency approvals. What happens when there's a crack in the new deck? Do they get an emergency permit for that or can they just leave it as is? What happens when there's a hole? They go out and get a CDP for that with alternative design? That's not an issue. And here, this is just an email from back in 2015 during the emergency into 2016, which. Pretty much chronicles the the reason for all of these emergency permits and all of the work thus far. The insistence on the deck is because the deck is really important to the inn's viability. Because hosties, commercial weddings and events on the deck. Not so much to support the lower cost visitor serving hotel use. And the. The deck proposal is actually not consistent with the municipal code. They use, this is the provision that was shown earlier by Mr. Ambulon and. It it actually requires that the proposed measures are the only feasible means of erosion control. And we've shown through our own experts. Opinion, which was provided with the materials, that this is not the only feasible design. There are other ways of protecting the inn, which we're not disputing, that actually are consistent with the municipal code with the LCP and the guidelines. You can have more of a synasoidal design, which actually the Bermuda Avenue seawall does mimic. And you can have riprap on top of the seawall and not extend it quite so high. Because that actually disincentivizes continued emergency work for a deck and it provides protection from waves. And and in the 10 years that the inn has been trying to get a project approved. Mr. Crampton has never proposed an alternative design that didn't include the deck, not one alternative. And the the walking surface actually is is. Is not the right proposal for getting rid of water. His. His explanation for why the deck needs to be there is to quickly remove water and to provide. Wave overtopping pressure and or to prevent from the wave overtopping pressure from eroding further the coastal bluff. But the the way that that's designed, actually a 45 degree angle would let the water dissipate more quickly. And this is another one of the coastal bluffs and beach guidelines. It echoes the immunity code and it basically says you can't increase the area of the bluff. And so the figures here, actually, the first diagram is from the coastal. Bluffs and beach guidelines and it shows that the bluff edge. Where it is and the next figure is from the inn's proposal and it shows they're doing exactly what the guidelines. And the Munich code says not to do. They're increasing the area of development and moving the bluff edge. And from this, this next slide is from the inn's proposal in 2016 where they suggested that. When they were trying to save the old seawall and the old deck that the seawall was just fine, it might need rehab, but if it needed to increase for sea level rise. Only 20 inches was sufficient and now they're asking for five feet and then and a windscreen wall. So the the position changes depending on where they want their deck. And I will try to wrap up quickly here.
I was about to say it's been about five.
These are just a lot of the provisions of the community plan and LCP, the erosion provisions. All of the aspects of physical access that the project is inconsistent with. So just in summary, there's.
Yeah, I'm going to mine.
Is inconsistent with the code, the beaches and the guidelines, the LCP. And there are alternatives and we would, we would say, just in response to what was said tonight, that there is a nexus for requiring public access because. The inn's seawall does prevent the natural process of erosion that impacts. The development of coastal beaches and so there is a nexus for requiring access. And if they don't want people going through their property from the street, they can have people come from Point Loma Avenue. Onto the deck and down those stairs and if they don't provide access to the new pocket beach that they're creating. Then there really is not really that much benefit for moving the seawall landward. Thank you.
Thank you. And I know. Ms. Holton did distribute or she did provide us materials prior to the meeting that we included in the application package as well that's posted on our website, so. I do hope that you all took a look at that as well. I think you're muted, Barbara. You have, Barbara, you have to unmute yourself. No one can hear you.
Okay, I have about a five minute presentation with my slides, if that's all right.
Okay, if you can keep it slightly briefer, I did have this scheduled for 7:20 to end and we do still need to get through board comment.
Okay, I'll go quickly. I'm going to try to share. And see if I can do this. I'm gonna go back from that. If I can get shared.
It's at the bottom of your.
I got it. You got it?
It might just be on a delay. Don't, I wouldn't touch anything.
Can you see it?
I cannot see anything, no.
Maybe after. I think I logged out.
Let me go ahead and.
Try to pull it up.
Yeah.
Have it.
Okay.
Are you going to grab it? Barbara, if you could just kind of focus your comments on what's currently being proposed and not what will be. What is existing and will be, would be proposed to be demolished.
Okay, um, give me just one second. See if I can get, can you hear me?
We can hear you.
Okay, can you see me?
All right, I think I can hold, let me go ahead.
Okay, I'm gonna, can you hear me?
We can hear you, so I should be sharing my screen now with preview. So I have you on page eight of what you sent me because that's where it starts talking about the wall. Can you see that?
Can I see it in? Are you on? Okay.
Barbara, Barbara, we have your public comment on the screen here.
She's going to the other computer.
Okay.
But unmute there. Unmute. Unmute.
Is there any other?
Can you hear me now?
Yes, can you please start making your comments? We do have to move on.
Okay, um. I'd like to quickly run through my first comments. And I'm sorry that this did not work out for me because I think it's important. But I'm inexperienced, these other people are not. My name is Barbara Holton and there are many documented reasons why the inn's plans are flawed. I'm in opposition to these plans for the following reasons. The inn had a lot of conditions not mentioned. They're counting on the city to ignore them. This new plan is a same permit, new concept, and ignores everything that happened before. All the bluff augmentation, all the violations, all of the deed restrictions that were put in place over this. All of the emergency permits and their conditions. All of these are ignored. I suggest that you look at the plans and not the slides. The inn will try to get everything done at the city. What their slides say and what Open DSD says are two different things. Briefly, I'm giving up the deck. The inn is getting a lot of sympathy for giving up the deck. In 2006, everybody agreed, the inn, while cramped in the city and the Coastal Commission, that deck is unpermitted. But the 2012 violation adds a violation for altering the buff face. In addition to deck use. There are many examples of official documents that document this and I have them all. But to the proposed plan, this is no longer a natural bluff face. It was used as a driveway for the 2016 emergency work. Stopper work order was issued. Slide number nine, if you can see it, shows how the bluff face was created. It was created as a driveway for the equipment. That's the bluff face that you're trying to protect. There is a recorded survey recorded by the inn that they did not provide to you. And it does not, the recorded survey shows. The toe bluff, the top of bluff and the bluff face at that time does not match what they're showing you today. The next slide, slide 12, shows the site today. There, the emergency work is not addressed. The whole north end was put in an emergency permit. Never inspected and the bluff toe and the augmentation of the north portion of of the cliff face. Is handled at that time. So, uh, next slide, please. Uh, they're drawing some cross sections, some are not, not to scale. How do you know what the thing is going to look like? Does the city have to make their own drawing to see? There are problems with these plans. The next slide shows a sea cave under the most critical area and that is on the north wall. There are four different sea caves there. They're very close to the work is being done. They're not covered by the geotechnical report at. A geotechnical report. For the next slide. Why did the city accept the plan? Well, the city was going to deny it and something changed. Who and why? The city was recommending denial. Somebody got involved. We'll ask Teddy Martinez about that next time. Pronet has been going on all this time. This needs to be more fully vetted to see that it meets all the conditions that they themselves have agreed to. To speak briefly to the public access. The inn proposed a public access and then like a strong man, they spend 15 minutes shooting it down. It was their idea in the first place. The community plan addresses abuse and the public access. It's extremely distressing to me. And we all know what the elephant in the room is, which is that liquor license, which is just waiting for a reapplication. And the last picture. Which is slide 18. After I showed the picture at the previous meeting, the inn didn't like what they saw. So in the last two weeks, they completely replaced the lattice on that sliding gate. They had put two walls, two tall green walls. And they have put a gazebo-like structure in between. So they have no intention of giving that up as part of the view corridor. In fact. The they have taken construction action during the week since the review. This is very distressing to me that I don't know how to work this system. And I'm sorry, but I would like to ask Craig Sherman, our lawyer, to say a few more words to support the decision.
Thank you, Barbara. I am going to stop sharing my screen now. I do want to hop over into board comments so we can get with that. I will allow for more public comment. If you are a member of the public comment wishing to speak about this. Please put your name in the chat box and I will go through those after we've received board comments and questions. Do I have any comments or questions from the board? Okay, great. I'll start with Chris.
Thanks, Andre, and I I might actually encourage Kevin to to go first as the chair of the PRC, but I do have. Some comments and questions too. So Kevin, I don't put you on the spot. I'm happy to go, but if you wanted to. Give summary of the PRC meeting, that might help everybody.
Yeah, I just want to start real quick. I I do have some some comments on this of my own. So we saw this at PRC two weeks ago. We had considerable time allotted for a public comment, some of the same stuff you're seeing here tonight. The PRC ultimately voted for zero. It was a recognition. Contingent on exhausting the possibility of providing public access. At that south stair. So that that was the PRC motion. I also wanted to mention some public comment that I received, written public comment. From Denise Knox and from HoDad's Catering and as well as Planet X were all very strongly supportive. Of the inn and and hoping to see the project approved. So that that's the PRC. I I could. Probably distill some of these issues to the best of my knowledge at least, and I I I do plan on commenting on some of these issues brought up. Or I could do that now.
You can do it now while you have the floor so I can get through everyone else.
Yeah, I do want to try. I don't want to drag this out. So try to keep it as succinct as possible. So. My understanding. On the coastal rules, whether from the Coastal Commission or San Diego, is. Pretty much in line with what Livia had shown in her public comment period. And so generally, I I feel like the inn is sort of asking us to to look the other way on some of this stuff because they're a good neighbor. And because they're giving up the the lower deck. The lower deck. Going away is a huge benefit to the beach below. It provides access at low tide. It's it's really just a terrible portion of our coastline currently and it will really clean that up. But, you know, I looked further at some of the public comment after the meeting and I just. I feel that, yes, while it does get rid of that lower deck, it's just replacing. You know, maybe 75% of that lost area, it's adding that back onto the upper deck by augmenting that bluff top. And so really the, I feel that the onus is really on the. You know, on Walter to demonstrate that that's critical as a structural. Necessity and not just being put there, you know, for the sake of of providing a a large flat platform up there. I think the the laws and the, you know, the guidelines on that speak pretty clear to me at least on how to deal with the bluff edge. I think the, the laws and the, you know, the guidelines on that speak pretty clear, to me at least, on how to deal with the bluff edge, and that development below the bluff edge, um, like such as a public, sorry, a private stair to the beach, for example, is not a permissible use of a sensitive bluff. Uh, a public access would be a permitted use of that bluff. Um, the bluff edge also generally doesn't allow any development within five feet of that bluff edge. Uh, this is, this is going out about 15 feet beyond the bluff edge uh, with backfill. And then it's got a windscreen, and I'd like to hear more on the purpose of the windscreen. The windscreen on the drawings looks to be about eight feet high. Uh, it's, looks like a, sort of a short block wall with glass on top, I'm assuming. Um, so that's what's sticking up on top of the wall. Um, you know, it seems to me like it's really put there for the sake of, of the usability of the deck, uh, which is great. I'd love to have a nice deck there, and it's unfortunate this thing is falling into the ocean, but I just don't think it's compliant. And I feel that the coastal commission is probably gonna is, there's a, there's a significant chance that they will turn them away on this, and I think the board can influence that process uh, one way or the other on this particular one. Um, I wouldn't be surprised if the city was eager to just get it out of their hair. Um, the
Scoobie.
One more thing on the view cone. Uh, the view cone, view corridor was brought up. Um, the view cone is not shown on the drawings submitted. And my understanding, based on our own community plan, is the view cone is, when you're standing on the end of the street, it's basically a degree um, cone emanating out from where you're standing, and it includes all of the areas outside of the buildable envelope. And so that would be those fenced areas, the dumpster areas, and as well as that augmented cliff side would all be built within that view cone. And I don't believe the view cone allows anything over maybe three feet high, um, with, with some exceptions. So I'd like to hear the applicants at some point address those concerns. I, I think the commenter's uh, criticisms are totally valid on this.
Thank you, Kevin. Chris?
And I'm gonna do my best to, Andrea, um, but this really is an important topic, and we had such a lengthy discussion at the PRC about it. Um, a couple of notes, just for the presentation, we just heard, uh, there was some discussion about encroachment. And, and I don't remember a lot of um, discussion at the PRC meeting about that, so just to clarify, I don't think anybody was uh, concerned about this project necessarily encroaching, um, at least that's my recollection, so um, calling that out. Uh, but most of the discussion, as Kevin just talked about, did talk about the, the, the public access. Um, and, and that was, I think, a really valid discussion. We felt like um, that might be something that this board would wanna weigh in as well. Um, on that note, the applicant, for me, satisfied um, the request to determine what would be the access point. So by giving the, the distance in feet, um, I'm satisfied for what the, the, the board was asking to receive as an update. Having said that, um, in seeing the, the contrasting presentation, which we heard parts of at the PRC as well, um, I agree. I, I, I think that this, even doing away with the lower level, um, you're still building out a bluff here. And um, uh, final point for me is I'd be really interested to know a little bit more about the alternate solutions uh, that Livia mentioned, specifically the riprap, and I'm wondering um, if a professional recommended that, and if so, if we could, we, if we could learn a little bit more about that entity and um, any information provided to us about the alternative meth, uh, you know, alternate methods um, for preserving this. And then final, final is, I'm a supporter of the IN. The IN is an asset to the community. That's not the deck, right? I understand for their business, the deck is important, but the asset, you know, frankly, the IN still can be preserved and, and recognized and supported as an asset to the community. We're talking about the, the, the deck and its impact on to the uh, the coastal bluff. So those are my comments.
Thank you, Chris. Do I have other board comments before I jump back to public comment? Cause I did not see. Ah, Virginia?
I just wanted to call to everyone's attention that aerial photo that Mrs. Holton provided. And it was clear to see where the cliff edge would have originally been. It follows a certain contour and the depth, all of the concrete that's there, it extends well beyond that and juts out into the ocean areas. So uh, my feeling is that, that the applicant is trying to preserve an improvement that they made without permission.
Thank you, Virginia. Melanie, I saw your hand up.
Yes, thank you. Um, my concern is the different possibilities of, of the way that this could be done, that it does meet all the needs. I mean, if we are not, if we don't have plans that are actual plans to be put into action, uh, why are we, why is it a configuration? And maybe that's my maybe that's my layman, but that's a, you know, I, it, if, if we're gonna put, if we're gonna put our stamp of approval on it, we need to have the, the valid options available to us. And I, I, I feel the same way, a- as was stated a, a moment ago by another board member stating that, uh, you know, the IN, grateful for the business of the IN, but uh, we cannot be responsible for any additional income, um, whether or not they have this built for that. I'm done. Thank you.
Thank you, Melanie. Do I have any more board comments or questions for the applicant? Okay. I
Hi Andrea.
Hi Craig.
Um, yeah, I, I would tend to uh, have a concern about the proposed concrete deck extending beyond the uh, edge of the top, the top bluff edge. And it seems to me that that is not consistent with uh, the coastal commission and, and the law, and that an alternative plan um, laid back at an angle, um, preserving the natural contour of the top of the bluff edge would be preferable solution.
Thank you, Craig. Okay. I saw Craig Sherman with his hand up, and then I'm gonna go to Jeffrey Anson. So Craig, you have the floor?
Great, thank you. Good evening. My name is Craig Sherman, um, coun, legal counsel for the Holtons. I've also been involved in this project nearing uh, close to a decade, part of a group of, you know, private citizens, environmental organizations, public watchdogs, trying to get the uh, IN at Sunset Cliffs to uh, right the wrong and the damage that's being done there. But uh, I just wanna supplement comments as to the slides you've seen and the laws um, that apply here, and that the findings can't be made to support uh, the coastal development permit and the uh, sensitive environmental bluffs for, you know, with regards to access, views, and coastal bluffs. So it's not just the coastal bluff development, but the access and views are also, you know, two critical acts, aspects. The access now historically has been wiped out due to the wall being there, and the stairs at the end of Point Loma can certainly be provided access down to the beach, so the public could use it. Um, the IN can contribute, should contribute to that. Um, views, if you walk down to the end of Point Loma Avenue, you can't see down the coast because they've put up fences and blocked areas that have historically been viewed. Um, and then the bluff, you've heard enough on the findings required for the bluffs, but to build them for uh, development purposes. And then, most importantly about informed decision-making, I, I feel that the, the board is really at it, uh, being disserviced here by the lack of information, the lack of environmental document, a negative deck, or SEQA environmental review. If you're gonna be building on environmentally sensitive coastal bluffs, if you're gonna be in, impeding access, not providing it, if you're gonna be demolishing walls in the sea, in the tidal area, you, you're gonna have some impacts, and it's a may likely standard, and you need to do environmental review. Uh, this board doesn't have it. It doesn't have the information in the drawings. The drawings are not to scale. It's omitting information. First time you saw the cone today by some of the slides of the applicant, they're inaccurate, as uh, Kevin, board member mentioned. So in sum, uh, the findings can't be made. The information is before your board. We recommend that uh, you deny it. Come back with the, the information necessary, continue it till you have the information, can review the environmental document and have proper input, so you can have, make an informed decision. Thank you.
Yeah, I will give the floor to Jeffrey Anson now, and again, anyone who is seeking to make public comment, uh, please either just raise your hand or put your name in the chat box.
Hello, thank you. Uh, my name is Jeffrey Anson. I'm a law clerk uh, with I would make a couple of comments about the development uh, permit. First, uh, agree with um, Livia, and she made the point that um, you know, public access probably settle and dawn, and then uh, you know, further to, to comment on that. That does that, uh, denial. Some of these that are going to come up with the coastal development permit is that um, the Coastal Act mandates public access, preservation of views, and protection of uh, areas such as coastal and um, the applicant is going to have a very difficult time getting a DPT for the project um, under the required in Dago Municipal Code 126.0708, and those include um, public access and public view uh, findings. And it um, will not adversely affect environmentally sensitive which you find under 143.0110, uh, to include sensitive coastal bluffs. And um, the project is between a public road and the sea, and yet there's no, the project, project would comply with all the required for three of the act, principally coming back to that public access issue. Um, you know, with that said, um, that's a, you know, one particular issue um, uh, among many of the other issues that have been discussed here, and, and with that, I'll end my comment. Thank you.
Thank you, Jeffrey. Okay, I uh, did pick up a couple of questions, so I, I do want the applicant to address those. The first is, uh, yes, like Kevin pointed out, the windscreen, what does that entail? Uh, were there any other alternative solutions considered uh, aside from the plan that has been presented today? And then I would also uh, like to know why we don't see any actual renderings of what this is going to look like and why we've just seen engineering plans. Typically, when we review projects, we do get a full rendering of what it would look like once built, and so I'm just wondering where those are as well. Uh, so I will turn the floor over to the applicant, and if they could just address those three issues that were brought up during the comments. Thank you.
Chris Morrow here. Hey Walt, um, let's start with the, the fence and the windscreen. Thank you.
Sure. Um, first off, for any wall, and I've been designing walls for over 40 years, you need a 42-inch tall guardrail to prevent people from falling over the slope. So uh, as the code required, you need 42 inches uh, to prevent um, someone from going over the top of the wall. Um, many of the walls we designed include windscreens. Um, to be honest, the, the wind uh, on the coastline is usually undesirable, but obviously, if you delim, if you for, don't want to see the windscreen, it's ea, easy to eliminate. And uh, to be honest, there was no windscreen on the, the lower deck. So the windscreen is, it's just a, a feature that many coastal property owners like, um, but the 42-inch guardrail is a requirement.
Then the, um, Andrea, your issue of renderings. Um, 10 years working on this, we've never had a rendering. It's pretty simple. I think the plans are relatively self-explanatory. They all, they are drawn to scale. There's components of every plan that is not to scale. That's just fairly typical. It's not something that's trying to be hidden. There's, we, we've provided photo sims that would effectively show what will happen with the removal of the lower deck. Um, there's, hasn't been a requirement for us to provide a rendering. If we had known that that was desired, we could have um, easily taken care of that. I don't think the lack of a rendering um, is enough to, you know, warrant another hearing, but um, I will respect, respectfully leave that to others. And what was the third issue? I apologize.
Alternative, um, alternative considerations for design, specifically following, yeah, the cliff bluff.
Right. Well, uh, interesting enough, you know, you have a, a local coastal plan and a community plan, and we're capable, um, people that are at this meeting today to come up with extremely divergent opinions of how we comply with that. Uh, we, of course, always look at different alternatives. Um, I mean, it's just part of the design process, but Walt can explain that in a little bit more detail than I can.
Sure. Thank you again, Chris. Uh, please, everybody should recognize that this wall was built in 1952, 20 years before the Coastal Act. So when there's discussion about not being consistent with the Coastal Act, this project was built 20 years before somebody even considered the creation of the Coastal Act. And again, the Coastal Act was not even codified until 1976, again, fully 24 years later. We have pulled back the wall to the back face of the, the deck. Uh, we've had several meetings with coastal staff. Coastal staff appreciates the work that was done to remove the deck, and they also agreed with the alignment. And also, please recognize that along the Ocean Beach Shoreline, and I've worked on many, many projects, many of the properties, because they were all built prior to the Coastal Act, have seawalls and improvements seaward of the top of bluff. Because they were constructed in the 50s, when the city of San Diego requested and encouraged people to protect properties because, uh, because the city was experiencing considerable erosion along Sunset Cliffs Boulevard in the areas. So th, there was a, a concerted effort for pe, for people to protect their properties, and many properties were built oftentimes with improvements seaward of the deck. It was the coastal commission who agreed that the alignment that we proposed, they could support and would appreciate the removal of the deck in exchange for the, the alignment that was shown. The concept of having a, a rock revetment at the, the back of the deck is a crazy idea and would never be considered by an engineer when you create this large void space that would accumulate water and then place large hydrostatic pressures against the wall. You would never do that. The concrete deck, which was something that the coastal commission would, was comfortable with, uh, in many ways, um, may well be necessary to maintain the viability of the IN. So if people support the IN, they should be recognized that there's a point beyond which the IN is no longer viable, and you'd end up losing it, and it may be exchanged it for something that you would like much less. And at the end of the day, it's still a low-income visitor-serving use, which is what the coastal commission encourages.
Thank you. Um, do we have any more questions from the board? Any more comments? Or a motion?
Can I ask a question of, of Walt? This is Kevin.
Yes, Kevin.
I, I guess I just, I feel like, you know, the, the structural drawings are trying to accommodate deck usage. And I understand that's critical to the IN, and that they want them. But my question is, is there a way of providing reinforcement to protect the building without extending or moving that bluff edge outward? And could you give us some kind of idea what, what that looks like? I mean, I've seen partial height walls. I've seen ones where they put the wall all the way up to the bluff edge, and the rest of the material was either removed or eroded away. I, I don't feel like these other ones have put all this backfill to extend the bluff edge out. So I, I guess people wanna see some, you know, why, why is this the only option?
The top of the bluff is at least for the southern wing of the building, about 13 feet from the southern wing of the building. If you build a lower wall, and we've discussed this before, a lower wall, say for example, the elevation of the previous wall was at elevation 20. Because the short platform, the bedrock short platform is at elevation minus five, every king tide, every high, every full moon, they have water overtopping the 20-foot-tall wall. That's because the bedrock is very low, and there's no sand, so you have deep water in from the wall. So every high tide, every new moon, every full moon, water is overtopping the wall. If you then hold the wall at 20 feet, and then add a, an eight-foot-tall landscape slope, you would have water overtopping the wall, run up the slope, erode the slope, and again, the top of the, the top of the coastal bluff is 13 feet from the building, and that would immediately erode these friable, erodible uh, terrace deposits. And I've only designed probably, as the Internet record, 100 walls. No one designs walls. No one designs walls with a sloping back filled with gravel, for example, or rock, for example. And it's important that you need to prevent hydrostatic pressures behind walls. So there's a variety of ways to do that. But most walls have impermeable surfaces to prevent saturation of the backfill.
Just i- if I may add, the picture that we showed of the wall that's called out in the Ocean Beach Community Plan as an excellent example of a wall just to the north and south of Bermuda Street. Part of the reason that that wall is so good, it's filled, it's filled behind it. There is no void, there is no open space, there is no great cavity behind the wall. It's filled to the top to reduce the pressures, as Walt has said. And that's fairly consistent with most every wall up and down the coast. And some of the pictures that have been shown in the past, there's actually a portion. I, I'm not sure whose property it's on, but it's at the, either at the northern edge of the Holden's property or the southern edge of their neighbor. And there's a wall down at the lower part that's basically L shape with nothing behind it. That's in the process of failure because it can't redo, it can't, it can't survive. It's getting hammered by the waves and then the water going back out on the other side. So it there's examples in the immediate neighborhood of, of why this is important.
Yeah, that makes sense. Not a structural engineer or soils engineer, I'm just a mechanical engineer. But those walls you spoke of, they seem, as far as I can pull from old photos, they seem to roughly align with the original bluff edge. And maybe those buildings are not as close to the bluff edge as the end is. It looks to me that it's between maybe, you know, thirty feet and fifteen feet from the bluff edge, depending on what part you look at. And then the wall goes, you know, the bluff is being augmented out, maybe, you know, fifteen, twelve to fifteen feet beyond the current edge. So I, I guess I just, I don't see that those are the same. I do understand your points with the, you know, the backfill or at least having the, you know, not having voids behind it, that, you know, that completely makes sense. So I don't know, where do we go from here? Well, what's the end going to do if coastal shoots this down for the bluff augmentation?
Well, the city, I'm not sure what the proper verb is here, but they, they gave the coastal commission the power and authority to implement and to implement the coastal development permit. So at the very beginning of our slide presentation, we were careful to note that we have a process three hearing with the city of San Diego for a site development permit. And then a full California Coastal Commission hearing for the coastal permit. So it's really, and obviously, it's a two step process for us. We can't get to the coastal commission until we finish our site development permit process with the city of San Diego. And that's what we want to do. And we've been working with the coastal commission over the years. We continue to work with them. You know, I'm not here to disparage anyone's comments or views, but, but we know and understand the coastal commission fairly well. And we want to be able to continue to work with them. And we believe that we're on a track to provide benefits consistent with the coastal commission's goals and objectives. And those points will again be discussed and argued in front of the coastal commission when we all collectively get there. Where, I guess to answer it directly, Kevin, we, we believe that the coastal commission sees merit in our current proposal.
Thank you. We are running up on about an hour of discussion. I still see some hands up, but I would like us to make a motion, you know, somewhat, somewhat reasonably soon. Do I, any further discussion, any more comments?
I would just say, I think the city is close to making a, some kind of decision on this. So I do think, you know, we can't, I don't think we can kick this down the road expecting to get more information.
Do you have a motion, Kevin, or another board member?
I don't think I'd support it. I had to think about it.
While Kevin's thinking about it, and Tracy, I was trying to respond to you. So for some reason, it wasn't allowing me to, to chat back and forth. But yeah, I did intentionally have my hand up. There's some chat about the, the business and what happens if the deck goes away. And, you know, I guess, and Kevin, you led into it with your last comment. And then we got into the discussion about what the bluff should actually look like. But back to the business topic. You know, we heard at the top of the presentation that this is a high profile hotel. Celebrities of all, every caliber are attracted to it. And so just as a reminder, we heard that as part of the formal presentation. But beyond that, you know, this board isn't tasked with, you know, the, the success of a business per se. Obviously, we want to see our business succeed, but we're here to serve the entire community. And so I just think a discussion about what happens to the business if an element is removed is not, is not our lane to be in right now.
Thank you, Chris. And so again, I, we got to get a motion to keep moving here.
I'm typing one in the chat.
This is Tom.
Hi, Tom.
I don't think that public access is a big deal here. Since there are a number of locations that have, that have access or will have access when the city gets around to building them. With respect to where the bluff edge is, is a question that I think that the coastal commission should deal with. And so I move that we approve this project. Recommend approval of this project as presented.
Okay, how do you handle that? I just typed one in the chat.
I see that as well. So I have a motion on the floor from Tom to move to recommend the project as presented. And then I have one motion on the floor from Kevin to recommend denial of the application as presented. The end should provide alternatives that don't require extension of the bluff ends and do not obstruct the view cones. Does anyone want to second either of those motions?
I second Tom's motion. This is George.
Thank you, George.
I'll second Kevin's motion.
Thank you, Melanie. Okay, so we're going to go in order here and we're going to vote on Tom's motion first. Okay. So.
You guys are messing up my file keeping. Okay. Okay, we're gonna, we're gonna start at the bottom this time. So we're voting on Tom's motion to approve as submitted. Virginia.
I'll read Tom's motion briefly.
I'm sorry, what?
Do please read Tom's mo-
Right. Was to approve as presented.
I say no.
Say no? Is that what she said? I don't know. She was breaking up.
No.
Nicole.
No.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Andrea.
I'm going to have to vote no on this motion as well.
George.
Yes.
Richard.
No.
Craig.
No.
Kevin. No. Tom.
Yes.
Jane.
No.
I vote no. Anthony.
Yes.
Chris.
No.
Melanie.
No.
All right, we're moving on to Kevin's motion. So I will just repeat Kevin's motion again. Recommend denial of the application as presented. The end should provide alternatives that don't require extension of the bluff edge and do not obstruct the view cone. That is Kevin's motion. I'm going to start at the bottom. Virginia.
Yeah.
Nicole. I do not see Nicole, Nicole. She also told me she was going to text if she was, if it was too loud. I'll skip her and come back. Andrea.
Uh, yes.
George.
No.
Richard.
Yes.
Craig.
Yes.
Kevin. Yes. Tom. Tom, yes or no?
No.
Uh, Jane.
No.
I vote, uh, yes, on Kevin's motion.
Either.
And the, no. Chris.
Yes.
Melanie.
Yes.
One, two, Nicole, did you come back?
Yes.
Thank you. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, to four, motion passes.
Thank you. Okay, I will also submit your Form six twenty tomorrow morning with comments from the board and.
Thanks, everyone. Appreciate the time.
Yes. Thank you for sticking with us for so long.
No problem.
Hey, who seconded that motion, Kevin?
Melanie did.
Thank you.
Okay, we're going to move on to our next project of the evening. Forty six, forty five, Santa Monica Ave. Do we have the applicant's presentation? Thank you. The floor is yours and you should have the ability to share your screen.
Okay, I'm just going to do a short presentation on what we have. See if I can share my screen here. How's that? Can everyone see? Can you guys see my screen?
Yep.
Okay, great. Okay, so what we have here is a, we are asking to take an existing lot. It is two lots that are twenty five feet wide, but has a single family house on it existing since the forties that go across the property line. So we are asking to do a lot line adjustment. Not a subdivision, I think it may have said subdivision there, but we're asking to, instead of having it twenty five feet to twenty five foot wide lots, we would like to split it east to west instead of north to south. Keep the existing home, which has been renovated and had an addition done in the last year and a half. And then add a separate unit in the rear. So here's a, a rendering of the site plan, the existing single family dwelling, and then the addition that was done in twenty twenty, which includes guest quarters on the second floor and existing garage with parking for that unit. And then the lot line adjustment would be between the two units. And we're proposing a two story unit, which would have a three bedroom house on the second floor and an A D U on the first floor and three additional parking spots. This is in the transit area, so parking spots are not required to be added. But we are adding three here, and there are already several existing in the front driveway and the garage. So here's nineteen forties home, the two story addition. There's a rooftop deck with guest quarters. And we are requesting that we could turn through this process, turn that guest quarters into an A D U. And then parking in driveway and then the proposed unit and A D U. That would also include a rooftop deck on the proposed unit. This is a street from, a view from Santa Monica Avenue. You can see the, in the gray is the existing house. And then the new unit is sort of outlined there in the back. You can see it popping out from the east side and just a little bit on the west side. Here's a side view from the west. The main, the house on the left there is the existing house with the addition, the second story addition that was done. When we talked in the committee, we had done a design of that second story addition that was in keeping with the, the very quaint look of the existing home. But the plant or historic department did not want that. They wanted to look very different, which we came up with this quite square looking design. We actually had the roof deck hidden in some tile roof. And they wanted us to remove that. They wanted us to move all the divided lights from the windows so that it was specifically not matching the original more historic structure. Then we've added the, the new structure in the back, sort of a similar play on the, the squareness of the addition that was added. This is a view from the alleyway in, in the rear. As you can see, there's three parking spaces underneath the, the unit on the second floor and a spiral staircase going up to the roof deck. This is the east side and it's similar to the west side in that you can see the unit in the front, the existing house, and then a second story addition. And then we move back to the new addition with a roof deck. These are neighboring properties in Santa Monica that have something similar with an existing small home towards the front on Santa Monica Avenue with a larger two story structure in the rear with rental units in the back. As you can see, they're back in the back units there. This is a view from the alleyway, which, as you can see, are very similar. They have garage spaces where we have an open parking structure in the back, similar to the one in the upper left corner. They have a little parking structure there. So you can see it's very back loaded with a higher structure in the back. It's very common to that area. So that's, that's all we have for our presentation. It's very simple project. The homeowner has owned the property for about two years. They want to divide it in order to have separate ownership between him and his son. And, but they didn't want to keep the, to tear down the existing structure to be able to use the current lot lines, the underlying lot lines. So that's why we're asking for a lot line division east to west instead of north to south.
Thank you, Sarah. Kevin, if you want to go over P R C comments, I, I do believe this was just forwarded to the board without any motion for a recommendation or denial.
Yeah, there was a lot of discussion about the, the significance of the lot split and the neighborhood development permit, essentially a variance. Because the lot split is under the minimum lot size and some other criteria like setbacks and things. In order for them to do this lot split, they have to ask for that, that variance. So that requires the board, or actually the applicant, to demonstrate certain findings that it's compatible with the community plan and surrounding area, you know, beyond the typical project. The, the project committee ultimately decided it wasn't, it was going to have to be hashed out at full board. So the, the motion was to move it to the full board without any recommendation, but to focus on the, in particular, on the lot line split. And I have plenty of my own comments on that.
Okay, thank you. Well, while you have the floor, would you like to make some comments? And then seeking to make a comment, please utilize the raise hand function. Thank you.
I guess to sum it up, I, I, I think the lot line split is being asked for because it allows them to build four units on this seven thousand square foot property that otherwise would not be allowed. And if they didn't split the lot, you know, they, they could build in the same orientation, but they could only build three units. And when I, when I say three and four units, I mean, two dwellings plus one A D U. If they split the lot, they can do two dwellings plus two A D Us. So that was my criticism of the, the lot split. I don't think it's being done for any other particular reason. particular reason. That's a significant, um, benefit to them, and I don't think it's a benefit to the surrounding neighborhood, and I don't think it's compatible with the surrounding area. This is RM one-one. You know, all the others, the houses they showed in their diagrams, those are, you know, one and, and two-unit developments. Um, so it, it just, it's adding a lot more. It's basically adding a lot of density that I don't think is compatible. That's my comments on it.
Thank you. I saw Richard raise his hand. Richard, you have the floor?
Yeah, I know. I had a question for Kevin. What is the minimum lot size? You, you mentioned that that was too small, but what is the size? You.
I, I think it's either five thousand or, or six thousand square feet.
For, for, for the RM one-one?
I think it's six thousand square feet. So this does have underlying, um, skinny lots like most of OB. So there's, there's two, uh, thirty-five hundred square foot lots that run uh, lengthwise right now.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. I'm gonna move to Virginia next, and then Anthony, I see your hand raised as well.
Hi. I, there's some confusion in my mind about the lots. At the start of the presentation, it sounds as if they are two separate lots and have been under the same ownership for some time. And the house somehow was expanded to cover one of, extend over the division of the two lots. And so if they are technically two lots with two parcel numbers, then they wouldn't require a split. But unfortunately, the house has, has gotten in the way. And, uh, I, I just, something just doesn't seem right there. And I think it is, it is more density than is meant for that area because the lots are uniformly set up to be twenty-five feet wide and have maybe two units on them for their size. And as Kevin said, this would allow for four.
Thank you, Virginia. Uh, did the applicant want to address any of the concerns? Okay, Sarah.
Okay, so first with the lot lines, it has an underlying lot line, so it's two twenty-five foot by a hundred and twenty-five foot long. The original house sat across that lot line. What we're asking to do is instead of chopping the house in half and making a long narrow house, isn't to adjust that lot line from long and narrow to short to make two square, relatively square lots, um, and then build in the rear. For the density question, it's a little, um, we could leave it as-is and just leave the guest quarters, um, if we didn't do the lot line, um, because you are allowed to have guest quarters and an ADU. But the, the homeowner was, he wanted to split the two lots for him, so he can, his own son will own one, and he will own another for affordability of, um, homeownership. And as far as density goes, um, it is different, I guess, than what is there, but also the code in all of California has changed now to allow more ADUs than were previously allowed. So density in that sense is getting more, so we can have more affordable housing. So it'll just depend on how we interpret that use of the code.
Thank you, Sarah. Anthony, I'm gonna jump over to you.
Oh, yeah, thank you, Mrs., Ms. Potter. Um, I think you answered my questions as well as clarifying some of them. And I do appreciate that, yeah, there's at least one more extra park, off three parking space that you're providing. Uh, so if I understand this, there, it, it's a twenty-five wide by one-twenty-five deep uh, lot. There's two of them. And so there's the, the existing structure, there's some reason over time encroached on the other lot. Is that what I'm?
It was built over that, just like most of the houses on that street. They have an underlying lot line. There are a few that were built kind of like townhouses, so they, they go down the center and the long and narrow. This lot and many other ones, they just built right across that. They used two lots. But that underlying lot line is still sitting there. So the, when you look at the, uh, legal description, it lists two lot numbers.
Yeah, you've been to my house, Anthony. It's the same way. Pretty common in this part of town.
Okay, so, and in this case then, an added benefit, I guess you could say fringe benefit is to have an extra uh, ADU on that, which, like you said, originally wouldn't. Okay, I, I think I've, I'm clear now. Thank you.
Yes, Richard, I see your hand up again.
Yeah, one more thing. So you have two side-by-side twenty-five-foot wa- lots, is that correct? So you have a fifty-foot wide property, and it goes one-twenty-five or one foot, whatever. But when I look at that picture, that front house goes well beyond the halfway point on that lot. So what is it that you're proposing to do? Are you gonna leave the lot on the right empty still? What's, what's going on with that?
No, the lots sit, um, they'll just, instead of the lot line running down the center, it will now just split in half. We are still adhering to the floor area ratio and
But it's not in half. It's not in half.
Not exactly in half, but we, the way I divided it was so that it would divide the floor area per lot.
But not the lot size. So the lot in the front will be bigger than the lot in the back?
Yes.
Thank you.
The floor area would match the lot square footage. So there was more square footage on the front, so that lot is a little bit bigger, and there's floor area is smaller on the back unit, and so that lot is a little bit smaller.
No.
Thank you. Tracy, I don't think your question's gonna get answered in the chat. Do you want to just?
No, actually, it was. I was, I was wondering if it was two lots now, and that, that's all. I, I think that's been cleared up a couple of times, that it is two lots, and it's just going to be two lots again, but divided differently. So yes, I understand now.
Sure, thank you. Do we have any further board comments or a motion? Virginia, yeah?
Property with no frontage on the street.
Sorry, you were muted part of that.
Yeah, I, I didn't hear that.
Okay. It's, this lot would appear, the back lot would appear to be a property that is on Santa Monica, but has no access, no frontage on Santa Monica. It's only has alley access. Is there any local precedent for that?
I believe there are up and down the street, most do have a unit in the rear, and they have maybe in the five-foot setback, uh, a fence with the, um, address numbers, so you can get to the back house from Santa Monica.
Right. Well, having a unit back there, but aren't most of them under the same ownership as the front house? This would be a separate entity. And would, and would someone want to own a property on, purportedly on the street, but has no access to the street?
I, I, I mean, this owner wants to do that. Um, he is, he, he's gonna own the rear unit, and his son is gonna own the front. I can't say what other people would want, but, and any of those units, they're not on the street, and, and this zoning, it's not just ADUs and owned by the same people. They can be, because they are separate units, not a house and an ADU, they can be owned, and they could be condoized, and that sort of thing.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, I guess I'll, I'll go. I have a question, kind of a concern and a question. So when you're making the back lot a lot shorter than the front lot, even in the plans, I was looking at it going, my God, there's like no yard between the back house and the front house, and everything in the back is got a view of this big giant wall that's in front of them as well, right? So there's no view, there's no yard. There's probably not gonna be any sunlight. I mean, it's just, in my mind, a terrible design. And the guy, I mean, honestly, the guy can sit here and say, oh, I'm gonna give it to my son, but i- in all actuality, this property is probably not gonna stay in that family forever and ever, and somebody's gonna buy the two separate properties, and then the people in the back, like what Virginia was saying, they're not gonna have Santa Monica access. So it's, it's just like they're maxing out the space and making it completely unusable for anything in the future. And they're maxing out the space and not giving any yard or any place to like hang out or get sunlight, for God's sakes. I mean, it's gonna be like a big corridor that nobody can see the damn sun. So I'm one hundred percent opposed to this, and I'm just gonna put it out there right now that like I would make a motion to not support this as designed until, you know, and I, I can't like even, I can't even come up with things to suggest other than sunlight and landscape, you know? But right now, I mean, I would make a motion to not approve this project just because of, of that. I mean,
I'll second that motion.
I'm sure it follows all the rules, um, Sarah. I'm totally sure it follows all the rules, but because of, you know, how I'm feeling with the way that it looks, I just, I'm not comfortable with this, this, uh, this property as-is. So that's my motion.
Thank you. Uh, so we do have a second, and I will call the vote in just one second. I have, uh, a few questions I see in the chat. So Susan Booth, would this be considered a condo conversion? It would not. That is a, uh, separate permit application that is map waiver, uh, that allows for the condo conversion, and this is just asking for a lot split. Uh, she did also ask what the square footage of each lot, if divided this way, was proposed. Uh, we did mention one would be smaller and larger, but I, I, I don't remember, recall Sarah saying the exact square footage.
Um, I didn't, it'd take me a second to look it up. I don't have it open right now, um, but I can. Give me one second.
Yeah, thank you. And Virginia and Chris, I see both of your hands up. Did you have any further questions and discussion? What were your? I, I'd still like to hear your comments before we call for the vote.
Thanks, Andrea. I, I do, um, so just really quickly, Virginia, I was giving you a quick second. Go ahead, if you wanna jump in, Virginia. I, I do have a comment though.
Oh, I, um, I wanted to know, is there a way to have the, um, is, is it allowable to have the front part of a lot less than twenty-five feet wide? Which could could make the second lot maybe fifteen and then widen out behind the other house? Is that even a possibility? It would have, it would be two lots from the street. One would be narrower than any other lots on the street, but it would be at least somewhat normal.
Are you presenting like a flag lot situation?
Yeah.
Okay, and we have, there's a garage in the way, an existing garage from the forties that would prevent that from happening. I have the lot sizes are forty-one-ten and twenty-eight-ninety-one. And that was solely based on the existing renovation had created a certain square footage, so we made the floor area ratio match that for both lots.
Can I, can I address one sort of elephant in the room here, Andrea, if I may?
Um, well,
Sorry.
Directly, because I, I do want to give Chris a chance to speak as he has.
Okay.
Thanks, Andrea. Appreciate that. Um, just responding to Tracy's, uh, input a little bit, and, you know, we discussed it at, at the PRC a little bit. But as a reminder to the board, we actually had two projects. Uh, one was actually one of the board members', uh, project, uh, without naming names, but there were, you know, you're seeing a lot of this, two buildings on one, and um, would I wanna live there with the lack of sunlight? No, but, but we've reviewed two projects and we approved two projects in as many recent meetings that actually had a very similar design to, to what we're asked to, um, approve here tonight. A- and so just, um, just putting that out there, but also the, the, the discussion of the PRC. In terms of how you could split these lots, I mean, if you were to follow the twenty-five foot sort of existing or underlying lots, what you have is what, uh, what you end up with, which is what you have about a block up the street to the east right now on the same street, which is four shotgun homes. And those are the worst thing ever for daylight and sunlight. Nobody wants to live in that. You've got six feet between buildings. So, um, you know, if applicant had to go to extreme measures here and follow those property lines, potentially demolish the building that exists and then build two structures, um, to serve what he's trying to accomplish of having a family member, he owned one, that's what you'll end up with, is these two long linear buildings, which um, I'm strongly opposed to. If, you know, if anybody knows the buildings I'm talking about, they're, they're, we may as well be in Philadelphia. They, they don't jive with, um, our community at all, so personally, I don't have a problem with what we're being asked to do in, in terms of the lot split, um, going east-west.
Thank you, Chris. Okay, Kevin, I'm gonna give you the floor. And then if there is no further discussion, we do, uh, need to call for a vote.
So Chris kinda hit on, uh, you know, the shotgun houses, and we've been very opposed to those. The community plan is against lot splits for that reason. And I'm, I'm a little afraid here because we're telling the applicant, don't split the lot to add these extra units. I feel like they could split it the other way, knock down this old house, and develop it the other way, which is even worse, right? So we're sort of in a corner here. I'm not sure what to do. It does provide more housing within the same allowable FAR. But man, that back house split, you know, a second, two units back there, mid-block with no street access. It's I, I, this is a precedent for really any of these RM one-one properties, uh, to become four-unit complexes. Or even more with future, uh, code changes. So I, 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 the board should treat it as such. The, the city may approve it anyways. But I, I don't feel like we should be on that, uh, that wagon. They don't have to tear it down. They could just build.
Yep. Uh, Virginia, I see your hand, and then we, I'm, I'm gonna ask to. Just remember to unmute.
It, this, this situation is different in one way from others we've recently approved. Those properties have had second units put on the back and without street access, but they are under the same ownership. They're on the same prop, piece of property. And this will be on two separate legal pieces of property. And it will open the door, as Kevin made me realize, to all of the previously approved projects being sold separately from now on. If, if we could split lots that way, then it can be done all over town.
Thank you, Virginia. Um, I, I do wanna just jump in here. I did live next to a house back when I was living on Orchard, uh, which I also believe is an RM one-zone that did have a lot split front to back. Uh, and one in the back had alley access, uh, and the front house had two units in the front. Uh, so I mean, it, there, the precedent does already exist in the community. Uh, so this wouldn't be setting anything new.
Yeah, but not with four units on that.
Tracy, can you call the roll for the vote?
Okay, I just wanna, I just wanna clarify that my motion was straight up just to deny the project with no explanation or anything, just deny the project. I, I know I went into a tirade about it, but the motion was just to deny the project. Okay. So, what?
Sorry. I, I feel like it should be denied based on some kind of reason if you're gonna go that way. It's, they're asked to make findings on, with the neighborhood neighborhood development permit, I believe. Um, so I would reference that.
Well, I mean, my, my, my complaints are about landscaping and, um, access to Santa Monica, like backhouse access to Santa Monica. So I don't know if I could really, I mean, those aren't really things that the coastal commission's gonna care about. So, so I don't, I don't know. But, you know, I'm, I'm not good at making motions, so you know, if we wanna vote on just a straight-up motion to deny project without anything, and then if somebody wants to come up with a second motion after that, that's more clear, that's kinda Andrea's call.
So I, I do think we can do a straight up or down, and then it's, I mean, depending on what happens, we can include the findings afterwards, um, you know, not necess- I don't think everyone has to necessarily agree to the reasons they're voting it up and down. Um, so I would say let's take the roll first and then see what happens. Thank you.
Okay, I'm starting at the top today, or just now. Um, Melanie?
What are we voting on? This is a, a vote to deny?
Deny. Deny.
Project, yes. Your yes vote means that you're voting to deny the project.
Thank you. I, yes.
Chris.
No.
Anthony.
No.
I vote yes. Jane.
Yes.
Tom.
Yes.
Kevin.
Yes.
Craig.
To deny the project.
Richard.
No.
George.
No.
Andrea.
No, no.
Nicole. Virginia. I'm just moving on to, yeah. Nicole. Andrea, do you got anything from her?
She looks like she's gone.
All right, let me count. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven yeses, and one, two, three, four, five nos. Motion passes. Motion to deny, project passes.
I will submit the Form six-twenty tomorrow, so just so the board knows what the Form six-twenty looks like. It, uh, doesn't specifically call out or ask for me to type in a full motion. It just asks if it's approved. If the, uh, if the project's been approved or denied, um, or it, we're abstaining from a decision, and then I can fill in separately our reasonings behind that. So, uh, when I fill this in, I will fill in the motion to deny, and I can submit findings with it as well. If we so choose, otherwise, it's just going to be a blanket. We voted seven to five to deny the project. Uh, like, when I, when I fill out the form, uh, for the, in its sunset cliffs, I will include, uh, several findings and what the, what the discussion was about and the purposes for that in separately. So if anyone wants to, uh, kind of send along their reasoning behind this and have me separately submit that so that the city can see the full reasoning behind this, otherwise, you know, the city is going to just, you know, they're just gonna see that we voted, uh, no, without any reasoning. So. Yes, Jane.
Andrea, we're on our iPad and I'm down to twenty-two percent.
Oh, no.
Yeah, we, we're, we're gonna disappear soon.
All right, yeah, we're moving on. Um, so, yeah, we're gonna move on to our final topic of the night. Uh, so Sarah, I will go ahead and fill out that form for you, and it will go straight to your, uh, city planner.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Uh, okay, so moving on to our CIP lists, you should have all gotten, uh, the list from the ad hoc committee. Uh, so I guess I will throw it over to Kevin, who is elected chair to, uh, I guess, open it up for discussion. Uh, how this form looks is we submit, excuse me, we, uh, rank what priority that we have the CIP in. And then give a full project description. Uh, so some of the, so we have a lot of things that have already been approved for a CIP project as well. So those are already in the queue. So by, I, so we don't necessarily have to resubmit them. Uh, but if we don't have anything else that we find is a priority, reranking those as our priorities kind of keeps the city's focus on that. Uh, and I just wanted to make that important note before we get into this discussion. Uh, so without, yeah.
Do you have that document handy? Share.
Probably.
It's, uh, it's on the website, if you want to just. Or I can share it.
If you, whoever's got it at hand could.
Yeah, if you have it open, um, I'm just looking at my email now, Tracy.
Yeah, I got it.
Yeah.
Thanks.
All right.
Uh, so basically to summarize it, we came up with lists, uh, with, we discussed a lot of different items. And we came up with a list of things we thought were, were significant and worthy of prioritizing. We didn't necessarily agree. All of us on, you know, or, or all of us like all these things, but we thought they were worth, uh, discussion and and potential consideration. And it was a unanimous vote to send this list of about, I don't know, fourteen items here for consideration. They're not in any particular order. Uh, there's a few on here that are already existing CIPs. Um, most of them are not CIPs. Um, I can go through them real quick. I, I think some of these are obvious. Uh, OB rec center improvements is not a CIP. It's in the community plan, and it's been a discussion item for a long period of time. Uh, it's mostly, you know, upgrade the whole building, new windows, uh, technology improvements, um, stuff that would really improve the usability of that as a, as a public space. Um, uh, storm drain repair and retrofitting, that was on one of our previous lists. Uh, that was to try and get the city to look at the flooding that happens every, every couple of years during heavy uh, rains and king tides, um, especially with consideration of sea level rise. That the, the storm drain system here is, everyone forgets about it until, uh, it floods again. That is not a CIP. Uh, lifeguard tower, uh, that one is a CIP. I think it's struggling to get, uh, funding. Um, there was a lot of talk about the issue, the public use of the bathroom and it not being safe, um, or just being ne- needing upgrades, and maybe if that could be done, um, I don't know, sooner than waiting for this entire lifeguard tower project. Um, and I know, and there was discussion about whether there would be a police substation as part of that, and, and if that would improve any of the sort of, uh, uh, crime in that area. Um, OB library expansion and upgrade. This is an existing CIP. Um, I understand it has, uh, recently got some, some donations as well as some, some significant funding that I think would, is gonna hopefully cover the design phase, and that's usually a, a really good thing. Uh, the ball usually keeps rolling once it enters that design phase because they're on the clock then, and they're invested. Um, but obviously, uh, a long-awaited, uh, CIP issue for the community. Um, estuary project is, if you guys remember the presentation about Dog Beach and adding some sort of nature of sort of fences along those trails to keep people and loose dogs out of the wildlife and bird breeding area. I, apparently that was denied. I'm not sure what happened there, but the park ranger had put a lot of effort into that, and I guess Park and Rec or somebody at the city didn't want to push forward on that. So this would be asking them to reconsider that. Um, serial roundabouts on West Point Loma. So there is an existing CIP, uh, that may come to fruition within a another year or so to put a roundabout at West Point Loma and Bacon at the entrance to Rob Field. Uh, so this, it would be asking to add additional CIP, or sorry, additional roundabouts along West Point Loma to sort of make a series of those to, hopefully would, would make more sense and keep the flow moving through there. Uh, versus just having one that doesn't really serve a purpose because the other intersections are, are bottlenecks. Um, walkable Newport, um, that would be to ask for closing uh, one or two of the blocks, uh, along Newport Avenue to Cars and make it a pedestrian plaza. Um, I don't recall if that included closing off, uh, Bacon as well, crossing over Bacon. If that would be a continuous thing, all the way from, from Abbott to, or sorry, from the park, from the pier lot up to Cable. Uh, I think that's what this is asking for. Um, OB parks. That was an idea to compile all of our park requests within our planning area. Um, although I don't see Veterans Plaza listed on here, um, but Saratoga Spray and Ebers Park to, to roll those together into one CIP, where maybe on their own, they might not justify that, um, but together they might. Um, the Mission Bay Park Committee had a CIP for a, a ton of different parks and improvements within that area. So I think that's totally reasonable to ask. And may, maybe it'll get more, uh, attention that way. Um, or maybe it'll get less, because we're sort of, I, I don't know. Uh, but that, that covers the, uh, park subcommittee, uh, proposal. Uh, pedestrian boardwalk, uh, from Dog Beach to the pier. Uh, this has been raised, uh, I think on numerous occasions over the last ten or more years of having a connected pathway. Uh, if you know, right now, you gotta walk through grass and sand and, and whatnot to get along the entire beach. So this would be asking for some kind of paved, uh, thing, maybe similar to, to what Mission Beach has. Um, bike storage lockers in various locations, uh, to promote biking and safe storage for commuters and visitors. Um, the second last one would, is rebuilding the access stairs south of the pier. Uh, these go down to the, the cement walkway, and they go up to the actual alley, uh, next to Silver Spray there. Uh, they're wooden stairs. They've been closed off for at least twenty years. So this would be asking to restore those to public access. And I understand that the neighboring property owners are in favor of that. Um, the last one is ADA access. Oh, this was similar to the beach mat thing we discussed before, which doesn't seem like a big-ticket item for a CIP, but maybe if we ask for a lot of these beach mat and access improvements, um, that it might qualify as one. And so it was really to, to provide, uh, you know, that walking mat or wheelchair mat at really all the main locations at the beginning and end of our, our main beach. And, uh, uh, Dog Beach and, and in between. So that, that hopefully summarizes these, um, and we're tasked tonight with putting together a list of, I think, ten items that may or may not include existing CIPs. Um, I also noticed the pier is not on here. The pier structural repair is an existing CIP. Um, so I, but I think that would be something that could be considered as well, in, in my opinion. So that's, that's all I have for now.
Thank you. Uh, so we can request as many CIP items as we want. They just stop getting prioritized after ten. So anything that comes af, so we can prioritize the first ten, and then anything that comes after that would kind of just be, uh, infill. I think North Park had something like thirty requests the last time we did this. Uh, so, you know, we can certainly be greedier. Does anyone want to start, uh, by either advocating for something, maybe unadvoc, disadvocating for something, I don't, that's not a word, uh, crossing something off the list. Uh, the discussion is open. I saw Tracy's hand up, and then, yeah, let's just, uh, go through the trace, the, uh, go through the hand raising and. I do want to keep this as a screen share, so I'm not gonna be able to see everyone physically raise their hand, so please do use the raise hand button function. That'll be the best way for us to move forward. Thank you. See, the floor is yours.
So really, really quick, I think, um, what we should do is if there's any, like, maybe just say, if there's anything on this list that absolutely will not get anybody's support, we could remove that right away. Instead of like going through each i- item and each person and saying yay or nay on each item, maybe we can just remove the things that nobody wants to support right now. Um, does that sound like a good idea? And then that way, we might just be left with like a handful of things instead of fourteen. Does that sound like it might work? Like, go around, go around the room and say, what is it that you don't support?
I'm not a big fan of walkable old Newport.
I second that as well. The merchants will shoot that down in a heartbeat.
Yeah, I'm not entirely opposed to the idea, but I do think it has to be something that we work closely in tandem and conjunction with the Main Street Association. And it would be better, uh, coming from the merchants association than from us.
I agree with that. This is Kevin.
Okay, so we've got some nos on that one, so anybody else have any nos that they don't want to consider?
I think.
I don't like the serial roundabouts at all. You might as well just put a four-way stop in every damn intersection in Ocean Beach, because that's what you're doing.
What else?
I, I'd get rid of the bike storage lockers. I do, I just don't feel like it's a CIP, uh, level item. And I'd get rid of the boardwalk as well. That's a contentious one. I'm curious what other people have to say about that.
Yeah, I was, that was gonna be my, the boardwalk, uh, thing, just get it out of there. Nobody's gonna go for it, even if we want it.
Here it is. Kevin Hastings.
We don't need more space for vendors to set up along.
Okay, does anybody else have any nos that they're not interested in?
No boardwalk.
Uh, that was Craig.
I'm, uh, I'm curious about the the storm drains and all that. Is that something we have to beg for? It, it, doesn't that come with normal city, uh, maintenance?
You would think, but, um, my understanding is there's some major design issues with that that are gonna require additional or relocating storm drains. It's gonna be a major undertaking. Uh, the city would have to do a, uh, a study of the entire watershed, um, coming into the area. And, you know, sea level rise and all that stuff to, to figure out what to do. They did that in La Jolla, uh, La Jolla Shores, I believe. Um, but my best recollection is they just don't want to touch it, because it's a big expensive deal. Uh, it's almost fits right in with the pier and how the pier got to this point.
It just, yeah, it seems like that it should be done without.
Having to ask.
Yes, that's what the city's for. It's why they collect taxes to keep everything running. These are improvements that we'd like to see here.
Virginia, I'm gonna put you down as a no.
I'm not sure what she's saying.
Okay. Okay, and then does anybody else have any nos that they're not interested in before I think we move on to like something a little different? Okay, so if anybody wants to advocate for any of these nos, now is your time to do it, and we can see if we can change each other's minds.
Just raising her hand. Jane. Jane, you're muted. You're still muted.
Her battery's probably dying. I wonder if she can call in.
Yeah.
I don't know if I can raise my hand.
Anthony, can you just go ahead and unmute Jane, maybe?
I can try. It's a request to unmute. She might, she might be dying. There it is.
I think I just, I think I just did it.
You're on.
I, 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 I wanted to advocate for the, uh, roundabouts, because I grew up in Boston, and we had rotaries, and they, and they really facilitated traffic. And here in the West, I know they call them roundabouts.
Um, I can't, uh, I can't raise my hand because I'm sharing my screen and I don't know where that function is now, but um, I would like to really strongly, uh, advocate for the roundabouts. This was one of the ideas that I actually put on the list. Um, we have a roundabout that is going in at West Point Loma and Bacon, and because it is a single roundabout, and it is a single-laned roundabout, it is going to create a huge parking lot within that roundabout. And one of the things that is nice about roundabouts is it does actually slow traffic so that traffic can flow a little bit more cleaner. Um, we have a really big problem that's gonna happen if that single roundabout becomes a parking lot, and it just congests West Point Loma. There's also two, uh, there are two additional intersections that are weird and funky intersections. They are, uh, Abbott is a three-way intersection, and Cable is a four-way, but it's a very awkward, strange four-way. And I have heard many, many people saying that they've almost been T-boned at Cable. Um, people don't know how to handle the three and four, uh, inner, four-lane intersections, and they freak out, and they jet out, and they try to get across the street. And I just, I am not a fan of roundabouts. You guys know I've talked about not putting one in at Bacon, but my, um, my belief is that if we put a serial, uh, if we put a, a, a a bu, a, a few of them together, it will slow the traffic, it will mitigate down at the light. Um, it, you know, I don't believe that things will get as congested on West Point Loma. And really, truly, guys, West Point Loma is kind of a death trap. So, I mean, people, it's a curve, it's a vicious curve. So I mean, people, it's a curve. It's a vicious curve all the way around. People don't see what's coming. I believe that the road needs to be slowed and I, I believe that roundabouts in a serial manner will actually work. So, um, I want to really strongly advocate for that. And I'm going to put my name on a advocate yes.
I'm not, uh, against the roundabouts. I just don't necessarily think or know if the CIP process is the best way to request them as it does involve, you know, of, of larger traffic study. Uh, and I'm just wondering if going through, uh, you know, the traffic committee and getting that study done to see if, you know, they're actually feasible, if those intersections are big enough, uh, and just have people kind of above us look at it and go directly through that way as opposed to requesting through the CIP process is just a wiser use of our time.
I like the way you put that Andrea. Thank you.
Thanks. Anthony, I see your hand up.
Thank you. Yeah. Uh, I actually wanted a second, what Tracy said about the roundabouts because it is, it's an engineered system. Putting one roundabout in, in, in a, on a street is an inefficient use. Uh, a system that's engineered that controls traffic is much more efficient and actually would work. Whereas one roundabout would just be, become a bottleneck. Uh, I've, I have quite experience traveling along them and I, I know anecdotally that they work. And I know, uh, you know, through, through reports I've read that they also are much more efficient in moving trap, uh, traffic and safety. So I would suggest, uh, to keep it on, even if maybe it isn't appropriate for CIP, then we'll know. Uh, the other one I wanted to suggest is I, I wasn't sure if Kevin's, uh, uh, when, when you mentioned about the, um, the bike storage lockers is, was it because it was, uh, too small of a dollar value? Uh, to qualify for a CIP?
That's my opinion.
Okay. Well, if that's the case, then I agree. If not, um, I would like to, uh, keep that on only because, uh, I see that um, as, as well as another amenity that we could provide to people that, uh, would take traffic off, you know, car traffic off the street and encourage people to bike. And, um, one way to do that is to have secure, safe place for people to store their bikes. So that's all I have to say on those two.
Thank you, Anthony. I, you just raised and lowered your hand. Okay. I don't see anyone else's hand up. Laura? Dennis, I'll, I'll give you the floor.
Hi, I, hi, everybody. I was just, uh, trying to anticipate when you were going to ask if we were going to advocate. Anybody want to advocate for something? I, I hit the hand up button a little too fast. Sorry.
Oh, go ahead and advocate.
Please keep the OB library as number one. I mean, we are almost there, guys. We got a big, big donation. The city is taking notice. They even told us that we could start disseminating information, saying if all goes well, within three years, you'll have a new library. So please keep it at the top. Maybe it doesn't have to be one, but close to the top, please. Thank you. Yes, ma'am.
Um, I also like advocating for, uh, I like the idea of possibly advocating for the lifeguard restroom separately. When they were giving the CIP presentation to the CPC, they did say that those, um, that those projects that are considered a public safety or health issue do happen to get prioritized and funded quicker than others. So, uh, possibly separating it would at least start to see some improvements get done to the lifeguard station and just slowly kind of start making progress on that.
Would you change the language on that item?
To reflect, yeah, to reflect that, I would change it. And then it, so if we do start complaining about possibly two CIPs, because the lifeguard station is technically in the CIP five-year plan, uh, then maybe they'll lump it together and move it quicker. So yes.
Can you guys see my notes that I'm taking too?
Yes.
Oh, okay. Good. Cause I just want to make sure, like, if you guys want me to change the wording of something, then let me know.
Andrea, are we voting on the priority order right now or just what's going to be on the list?
Uh, we're discussing both.
Roger that.
Yeah.
Do you guys think the pier should be on the list or should we add some, uh, description on certain types of things we'd want to see on, on a pier replacement? You know, that's been discussed at town council. Nicole has, has said a lot of things about that as well.
I, I think the pier is already on everybody's list. I'm not sure that, I'm not sure I want to, I'm not, I wouldn't say waste the CIP slot, but I'm, I mean, the pier is definitely on everybody's list.
Is the list though, uh, comprised of, of all these, um, energy-saving techniques and technology and all that that, uh, has been brought to our attention? Is that making sense? Are we, are we going to do anything?
Those have not been previously requested when requesting the pier CIP. Those, so two years ago, when the pier was on the list, or you know, four years ago, when it was on the list again, uh, those were not included.
Okay.
Yeah, it's like a $7 million thing that, that existing CIP. So it's, it's definitely expanded. I, I think it justifies keeping it on the list if we add some, some spice to it. If it's just replace the pier, then I tend to agree with Tracy.
Well, wasn't there some type of, of biology, uh, someone had it brought to attention about, um, some like sea life biology center there, some wave, uh,
Energy, it was an energy producing, uh, something or other that Nicole, Nicole thinks that there's some way that we can produce energy with the pier. I can't remember what she called it though.
I would just call it wave energy capture if, if we're gonna add that. And, um, the other one was, uh, educational or marine education center.
Yes, yes.
I don't know if that includes like a little underwater, uh, deal or, or what?
That would, I mean,
Somebody recommended better bathrooms on the pier too.
Yeah, I, I brought that up at once when I
These bathrooms are terrible.
Yeah.
Okay.
But I'd be interested in something like that with the, with the, uh, energy and the, uh, marine biology. I mean,
And the stairs should extend to the beach as well.
One of the years last time.
We, we've previously asked about extending those stairs years and years ago.
Okay, so as far as, um, okay. So the items like from here to here are things that nobody has opposed. Okay, they're all things that are great. So if we want to organize these in any way right now or prioritize these, um, we can do that. And then I would say we can reconsider the things at the bottom if anybody has changed their mind. Does that sound like a fair plan?
So let's, storm drain is number 10 then.
Yeah, so let's go ahead and prioritize these that I've highlighted. Okay, I'm gonna just hog up the space here. So, um, it sounds to me like the library and the pier are things that everybody is really for.
And the lifeguard tower.
And the lifeguard tower. Thank you, Craig.
Okay. And, um, there is a priority of one to five that we can apply to each one of these.
I'd put the, the rec center down at the bottom somewhere.
Yeah.
I think other things have taken more priority.
Okay, so like a five? Well, let's just, let's just shout out some numbers. So what do you guys think the pier should be?
Can you zoom in a little bit, Tracy? I'm sorry, or just make the font bigger?
Yeah.
And is one the most important? Five is least important?
Yes.
And then anything, yeah, and then anything that comes after five, we can still request, but it'll be considered, uh, on the same level of importance as the five.
Parks needs to be in the top five.
I'm sorry, what?
We need to keep parks in the top five and keep the rest on that.
Well, there's only, um, uh, let me, let me reiterate. The priority numbers are one through five. So everything can be a one or everything can be a five, but it, it doesn't have to be in a numerical order. We can just say three of the items are number ones and the others are number threes and that kind of stuff.
Then I'm gonna, then, then I'm gonna say pier, lifeguard tower, slash police station and library are all number ones.
I agree with that as well.
Yeah, I agree.
Okay.
I agree with that, including, um, the parks.
The parks being number one. Does anybody disagree with the parks being number one? I would, I would, I would probably put that at a number two, because it's not, um, it's not like a crucial infrastructure.
Okay. I, uh, the parks are pretty old group together too, and I, I don't know if we can submit them all together.
Wasn't that planned though? That if we have them all together, then it's probably gonna get accepted easier?
Maybe, maybe. I mean, who knows what the city thinks, right?
The way this is submitted, I can only put in one address. When I'm referring to CIP project, it's, it asks for a very specific location of these things.
That's right. That's right.
Mission Bay Park did their entire zip code as one CIP, so.
I was just thinking that 92107 could be our area too.
So I'd like to put the lifeguard restrooms, um, and ADA safety requirements at a number one as well. Anybody disagree?
Well, isn't that, isn't that subsumed into the lifeguard tower and, uh, police substation?
This is asking for it sooner, right?
I like the way it's worded already. I think it focuses on the bathroom situation.
So anybody disagree with prioritizing that as a one?
When you do the lifeguard station and the police substation, I mean, the whole downstairs is a bathroom, right? In locker rooms?
Yeah.
Wouldn't that just be one?
I, I think so.
But there was some conversation about how the restrooms were actually a separate item. Um, I don't know if Kevin remembers that or not.
I just don't see that as a number one standalone, because you know, that's like a band, just doing that's a Band-Aid.
I, I, I think it's all one item. I really do. I, I'm not exactly sure why we're separating it.
I thought we separated it because we don't want to wait another 10 years for the
Instruction standpoint, it's all concrete. So if you're gonna do one, you're gonna do them both.
Right. I, I can't see spending, you know, a billion dollars redoing the bathrooms in the existing building if you're gonna be building a whole new building. It just doesn't make any sense.
Then we should have a separate bathroom probably because there are so many homeless people. What are they going to do? You know, they, we do need public restrooms in a civilized society.
We have public
Well, we don't have a civilized society anymore.
The problem with the public restrooms is they're not being used as restrooms. They're being used as campgrounds and it deters other people from using them as, as intended. So I don't, that's not a CIP, just a gripe, but we need, we need safe restrooms that already exist and we need them cleaned more than once a day.
But they are part of the building, so I mean, if they're part of the building already, they're not really going to take them separate and build separate restrooms.
Right.
It's going to be done as individual stalls per the transgender family style restrooms. There, all of them are going that way at the state, by state requirements. So it's going to happen with the lifeguard tower. If it's not clean and if it's not policed, it's going to be the same shit show as it is now. So building a new restroom doesn't fix that.
Okay, so should we combine them then? Like we had them originally?
If you just, yeah, I mean, if you want to just say including new restrooms, that's fine. But I don't think having restrooms is a separate item that makes any sense.
We could, we could put something in there to the effect of, um, with, with new guidelines, you know, to, to current guidelines or whatever, you know, just to
Okay, I've just changed it. So, uh, are we prioritizing that as a one?
Yes.
Okay, uh, library is a one. Uh, OB rec center improvements. We requested this on a previous CIP. I can't remember what the, what the, uh, rating was on it. Um, but we all know that they need some serious love down there. So
Tracy.
Yeah.
You know, on the lifeguard police substation, uh, what I would say, including restroom updates, I would see including, including all applicable updates to comply with, 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 uh, with blah, 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 and, and, and AD, and ADA requirements. Because that whole, that whole, uh, structure was built pre Americans with Disabilities Act. You know, it's completely non-compliant in just about every way you could imagine. Yeah.
I would say including safe and accessible and monitored restrooms.
Including
Or something to that effect. Where someone's actually present where these, where people are entering and leaving so they can keep an eye on it. The way it is now, it's off to the side and ignored.
Can I ask a question to you, Kevin? When it comes to monitoring things like this, is, do we have a precedence of that happening anywhere else? Cause I haven't really seen anything.
It happens in Europe.
The discussion The discussion was Uh, there would be some kind of staff present at the restroom entrance. They had to pass through maybe an area that is part of the police or lifeguard used, so they would encourage enforcement.
What if there was some type of information center that was right there? That gave, um, a, a, a separate area, um, for, for people that were using the restroom for the right reasons to go in as well. I mean, is there anything like that? Right there?
Well, there's a Mission Bay, there's, there is a visitor center in Mission Bay, except I don't think it's been, been open for years.
Yeah, I think, I think that's pushing beyond what we've already kind of been asking for. Um, if we're gonna ask for something like that on the pier, then I, I think that that's something that is already kind of taking I don't know. I mean, the OB and A office is also an information center as well. And then if you guys remember right, a couple of years ago, we actually did ask, um, for a visitor's center at the foot of the pier and that I didn't put back on the list this year because it's already on the list.
Oh, gotcha.
Another thing on those other lists was a, a, a park and bike center at, at Rob Field parking lots. So that people could get easy parking and then trolley or bike in. I don't, I don't think that made our cut.
Okay, so can we get back to like, uh, like trying to order these? Um, just because I know we're really close. We're actually at the end of time here.
We're at the end of time.
Okay.
Let me, let me do one thing. We're running out of time. So let me just give you my treasurer's report so it can get written down.
Hey, hold on. What is it, Craig?
Okay, the bank balance right now is 1,023.63 and reimbursement has been applied for, with the city for $369.49 and the city is currently evaluating and probably going to be asking for additional documentation because they always do.
Gotcha. Okay, um, back to prioritizing the OB parks. Do we want to give that a one, two, three, four, or five?
Two.
Take that down to, to four, I guess, if we're not going to be, uh, address specific.
Andrea seems to think that we're not going to be able to do it this way.
Yeah, then we'd have to really be specific as to which park we'd want to work on first.
Right, and we did, so, um, just to follow up with what Teddy was talking about, we, uh, Nicole went out and met with him today. Uh, and it, it does seem to sound a little bit more arduous to go through, you know, the funding of the city and if, uh, we find, so my thinking is because we have been talking to other groups, like CDC is privately fundraising for Veterans Plaza. Uh, we've had some interest from another private group about possibly building, uh, a privately funded, uh, you know, the workout stations in Saratoga. So if we kind of pursue those avenues, we might be able to get some of our park requests done sooner as opposed to putting them in, uh, to the CIP request process. So that's why I'm kind of, you know, hesitant on putting the parks in there. Not that I obviously don't want all of those things, but I do. Uh, I just think that there might be other avenues we haven't explored yet that would get us what we want quicker. Uh, I just think that there might be other avenues we haven't explored yet, that would get us what we want quicker. And I also have the survey pulled up right now, uh, looking at it, so, um, yeah, so it has, uh, yeah, so it's, like, you're all, you can only put in primary street address and across street.
Okay. So we'll just, um, we'll take that off of the, the top portion of the list, and we can reconsider that another time, maybe.
So what's the address for the storm drains, then? And I don't, that's not, you don't have to have it. You gotta put something in their form, but.
It could very well be.
I mean, I can't list five different locations, the storm drains are all pretty much at the end of Newport and Abbott.
No, it's the entire system underneath OB, it goes all the way to Sunset Cliffs, the, um, the city did a CIP for, or, um, orchard stairs, salt pool stairs, and something in La Jolla, all under the same CIP, I mean. I disagree that they can't be both together.
Well, I mean, we can leave them on the list and prioritize them as a five, and, you know, if Andrea feels that she can't submit them, then we, we can't submit them.
Let you get them all individually after, after five, I guess. If, if that's the case, right?
So let's just do that for now, and then, um, these are the.
I have a question about the estuary project. Can we combine that with the ADA access to the shoreline?
It's a totally different project.
Well, I guess, they weren't using masks, were they, or?
No. Do you remember the, the presentation that the lady came and gave us about building kind of this cool fence that, uh, that kind of blocks the, the pathway and prevents people from going into the estuary?
Right, but what was the, uh, what was underfoot there?
Just sand. Yeah, she, all they were doing was just putting in the fence.
The wooden fences, yeah.
Yeah, and we weren't really given a lot of explanation about why that project was denied. It was just brought in by Laura Dennison, saying that she'd like to see it, um, on the potential list. It wasn't a very costly, uh, it wasn't a very costly project either, so I'm not exactly sure why they denied it.
Uh, yeah, that's true, Ben.
Uh, they, this is Laura.
Okay.
They, they said they, uh, it was just a lower priority than some of the other things that they had, they felt, the city felt it was a good idea. It just wasn't as good of an idea as the other money, and, as it just didn't make it to the top of the category in which it was placed.
So lower priorities than any of the other things they aren't doing.
And I feel, I feel like that's gonna be kind of our, our thing, too, is it's not a high priority, it's not infrastructure-related, and you know, maybe we should just put it at a five? Or take it off the list altogether.
Well, let's not take it off, I mean, it's sort of for the environment, and people come here to look at birds, and terns nest over there, and dogs eat their eggs, and, I mean.
So the, does the board agree with a five?
Should not be in the top five, it should be one of the numbers, the unnumbered ones, I guess, that go after five.
Agreed.
That's fine with me.
I, I would move to.
The form submission, it's one through six.
Oh, one through six?
Yes, sorry, I've been pulling up, yeah, I have the form next to me, just to like, yeah, kind of.
Okay, cool.
What I'm gonna be doing for each of these, yeah.
Um, we build the access stairs south of the pier up to Niagara near a Gansett Alley, what number or priority should we give that?
After six.
Well, six is the lowest, Kevin.
Oh.
Um, the ADA access to the shoreline, this is running into the same problem that we are having with, um, you know, the parks, is can we, can we ask for multiple locations?
It would make sense to do it all at once over locations, if not the entire city.
Of course.
I'd call that a six as well.
Okay.
Let me just state, guys, if you couldn't go out to the shoreline, you wouldn't think this was a six. Just so you know.
Yeah, I mean, I would really like to see it as a four, I mean, I don't, I don't think that it's like something that the city is gonna be like, oh crap, we can't do that, but, I mean, I would like to see it at like four, for sure. So I'd like to put it up there.
Well, isn't that a legal requirement to the, uh, the high tideline access for ADA?
Might be.
It's also cheap, so.
Let's bump it, let's bump it to a three and see what happens. Bump it to a three, see what happens?
Yes.
Okay. All right, so those are, those are the top things that nobody disagreed upon. And then underneath are the things that we have disagreed upon, um, or advocated for. Is anyone in the, in, in a mindset to change any of this?
I would advocate for storm drains, I, with respect to Virginia's comments, yeah, the city should automatically be addressing these issues, but they're not, so. They need to be prior. So I, I think she actually supports repairing them, she just doesn't think we need to be, do it.
So what do you think, uh, uh, three, two, one?
Um, I don't know, four, five, somewhere in there.
I would, yeah, I would just like to say that they are currently doing lots of assessments for storm drain and maintenance, I think I have sent out two surveys, um, just in the past year about which storm drains and which channels need maintenance and attention, so the city is going through and looking at them. Um, I guess, we just need to be a little bit more proactive with filling out those surveys and making sure that, you know, the rest of the community fills them out as well.
Okay.
Yeah, but even a clean storm drain isn't gonna hack it when we hit these in high times.
Okay, and then, um, the last four items on the list were the roundabouts, the walkable Newport pedestrian boardwalk, which no one is gonna go for, so we might as well just take that off the list altogether, and then bike storage lockers.
Those, those first three are way too controversial.
Yeah, I, like I said before, I would like to see serial roundabouts come, uh, more as a traffic engineering request. I, I like them, I want them to be funded, I just think that, uh, having a professional engineer come in and, you know, decide, uh, is, again, a better use of our time and our voice.
Awesome, yeah, I, I totally, I want them, I want them now, I didn't want them before, but now I want them.
I think if we wanna be traffic engineers, we should just put a four-way stop at every single intersection on the beach. That'll solve your traffic problem.
Tra, uh, four-way stops create a lot of pollution. So, anyways, okay.
We're not here to solve the pollution issues.
Yes, we are.
All right, we're taking that off the list, so we don't need to discuss it.
So it sounds like these four items are not gonna be included in the list, and these ones up here that I highlighted are. Does anyone wanna make a motion to support those, these items?
I move to CIP list of these ten?
Uh, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine items. CIP.
CIP request. And to, yeah, to pri- prioritize these nine CIPs.
I'll, I'll second that motion.
Damn it, I was just gonna second that motion.
Priority, hold on, what the fuck, hold on, wait a minute, oh, did I just say fuck, I'm sorry. Who seconded that?
Of nine CIP requests, yeah.
Who, who, in the following?
With the following priority, okay, yeah.
Requests with the following priority, okay, who seconded that, I'm sorry?
Richard.
I'll do.
I'll just put down Richard. Okay.
It was Anthony.
Oh, it was Anthony, okay. I'm sorry, it's getting late and my brain is like turning off. Okay.
Anyone against that?
I mean, I would still say that the parks each need to be separate.
You can have them all in separately if you can't do it as a group, right?
Yeah, I can, Kevin, thank you for volunteering me for doing that work, no, I'm just kidding.
I'm really good at volunteering other people.
So, yeah, does anybody oppose this list?
Nope.
Wait, you know what, I don't even know who's here anymore, is everybody still here? I gotta take roll, I'm sorry. Uh, Melanie?
Yes, here.
Okay, um, I'm just gonna basically, this is voting on the motion, so Chris. Chris.
He's gone.
Oh, see, okay, hold on, I gotta get, I'm not gonna share my screen anymore, cuz I can't see.
We, so we do, yeah, um, so this, this is technically due the first week of August, but I think, like, I have a day turnaround on this, too. So if we don't have quorum, we can quickly vote on this at early next meeting.
Okay, so is Chris still here, or is he gone?
I do not see him.
Anthony.
Yes.
I vote yes, Jane and Tom are both gone, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, Kevin. Yes, Craig.
Yes.
Richard.
And George is gone, too.
George.
He's not here.
Yes.
Oh, he is, okay.
Andrea, you're here.
I am, but, it's cuz you're blending in with the rocks, George, I can't.
Andrea, are you up or down?
I'm, I'm for it, yes, probably.
Okay, uh, Nicole, is she still here?
She is, but I.
Hey, Nicole, are you around? Virginia?
Yes.
One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, we have nine yeses.
All right, and we have ten people here, so that's still technically quorum, yes?
Uh.
Nicole will be absent for that vote.
Yeah.
Did I hear, uh, did I hear Laura Dennison put way in, I'm sure she's got a vote.
Did Chris, Chris sign up, huh?
No, I'm not on the committee.
I mean, we can technically pass this, but I would also, you know, feel a lot better about it if we just fi- do one final presentation of this, and then I think, yeah, I have, uh, I can just submit it the very next day after that, and we can still make the deadline, that would make me feel a, a little bit better about this whole thing.
Yeah, I think, I think we should clean it, I, I mean, we could clean it up for you and get a nice clean list and possibly have no discussion about it at the next board meeting, that would be really.
That's a good Santa item.
Um, so I'm gonna go ahead, uh, just, let's, we're gonna continue this, then, instead of motioning to approve it. Uh, we're gonna continue this to the next board meeting. Cool, and then, without any objection, I wanna continue the bicycle discussion to the next board meeting as well.
I agree.
Cool, 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 uh, we have the treasurer's report, I don't really have any chair updates. Um, so. Yeah, uh, so I guess we will see everyone, uh, August fourth. Cool, okay, meeting adjourned, awesome, thanks for hanging in here, guys. Um, see y'all later. And then, like I said, uh, if anyone wants to send me findings, uh, to support the no vote, like, you know, just saying, just saying that we voted no on this project, yeah, without any further explanation of it, doesn't make the case for the city strong. So, uh, go ahead and submit some findings, I can just put it in a memo and edit it, add it, add it in there, uh, to make the case a little stronger, or else the city is just gonna be like, why?
Are, are my opinions considered findings?
Uh, I would, so this, the stronger cases would be, you know, pulling something out of the community plan that this, that that project goes against, and like, um, pointing to specific pieces of our community plan that the project is not in compliance with, is a, a better, better finding.
Okay.
And requirements for what findings they're supposed to make to get that, um, variance. I'll distribute that for you guys.
And then Kevin, do you want to have another just really brief CIP meeting, just to make sure that we're all on the same page with this? Cuz I think, like, Nicole kinda wasn't around to listen to it, and Jane wasn't around to listen to it, and I just kinda.
Can you guys text about that, we've dwindled down, we're totally not at quorum now, don't really have, um, you know.
Okay.
Just gotta call the meeting, yeah.
We're gonna do that offline.
Okay, cool, all right.
Bye.
Bye.